All right, it is six thirty-four. I'll call the meeting to order. Please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance. And Kelly, how about you tonight?
Pledge of Allegiance, do the flag of the United States of America and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Um, agenda review, any discussion on the agenda? Anybody want to reorganize any of this at this time? We're all good? Uh, comments from select board, town manager and citizens topics not on the agenda, select board. Rika?
Uh, the library is having the town, holding the town challenge again in March. And we'd love to have the, I say we, wearing one of my other hats, love to have the select board show up as a team again this year. Come on, you can do that. Select Board won the prize one year, couple of years back.
That was in the nineteen forties.
We'd have to warn that, right?
As long as we don't discuss the answers amongst ourselves, I think we'll be.
Um, anybody else, Dave?
I did, uh, announce to social media that I've set up an emergency fund, um, and it'll be dollar amounts that's set up for anything to do with food or beverages on nine-one-one scenes. I've already had a few responses. I'll forward, and all the girls in the office know about it. And I'll forward the information to Brandon to try to put it up on the town website.
Anybody else? Okay, citizens, topics not on the agenda. Chief Dofflin. And yes, as you see Chief Dofflin approach the podium, please, anybody that has, uh, requested a moment to speak, uh, go to the podium, please. Thank you.
Um, I wanted to just brief you guys. Uh, we did have a, um, call for service town fire department on Saturday roughly around eleven fifty-nine, um, twelve o'clock, uh, Saturday afternoon. Um, both fire departments responded along with mutual aid. Uh, I do wanna, um, extend my thank, um, thanking mutual aid departments, um, and our two fire departments. Uh, we requested, we had a report of a house fire. Um, and all mutual aid and fire departments personnel remained on scene from noon to about four-thirty, um, on Saturday. First, uh, unit from our town, uh, from the initial nine-one call, um, arrived on scene within twelve minutes of the scene. Um, so due to the area that was on Red Bull Road, um, that was a pretty quick response, uh, for the first, first engine getting there. Uh, we also did, uh, respond back on Sunday, uh, with the state fire investigating, uh, unit, uh, for additional four hours, um, to try to determine, determine the cause. Um, and at this point, it's still deemed as, um, unknown. But like I said, I just wanted to update, update you guys and, um, and thank our departments and mutual aid. That's it.
Thank you. Thank all of your staff as well, fire departments, and, and again, mutual aid as well. Um, any other comments? Top, uh, citizens topics not on the agenda? Hearing none. Review minutes of previous meeting.
There are none for this meeting. Uh, that was the special meeting and we'll have those at the next regular select board meeting.
Okay, that moves us into the fiscal year twenty-six budget. And I asked Brandon prior to this meeting if there was any of the budget, um, items, meaning category, um, uh, general fund, highway fund, or solid waste fund that are, are pretty well set and that we, we are not looking to be in long discussion about. Is that something we could wrap up, um, right out of the gate? And the only one I guess would be at this point, the solid waste, because that's a enterprise fund self-supporting and is not, uh, run by the tax dollar amount. And, um, he said that that one is pretty well done. We could do that if you want to get that off the table right out of the gate. How's the board feel about that? Okay, so let's do solid waste to get that over with.
All right. Now, we already went through this budget a couple of times. There's been no changes to it. You want me to pull it up on the screen?
Please.
Okay.
Can everybody see out there in the audience? Josh, can you see that screen okay from where you're at, or does that need to come around more for you? Yeah, okay. All right, thanks.
So the, all of these options, options one through five are the same for this budget. Um, I just broke it out, so the page is working.
Is this the general fund budget, or is this the?
This is the solid waste fund budget. Um, so total expenses for the solid waste are four hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Um, revenues, of course, are the same. The punch ticket, uh, the permit sticker, excuse me, under this budget would be fifty-seven dollars and forty cents. Um, and there's no change to the, to the punch ticket. So the permit sticker would go from fifty to fifty-seven forty. Punch ticket would remain the same.
Any questions or discussion on the budget? Anybody? Everybody's okay with the increase in the sticker? Recommended? Go ahead, Dave.
The unresolved to me still is the notion that land that doesn't have any buildings on it, which was, I thought was going to be taken off, is not. So I'll end up getting like four or five stickers and I have one house. So I think that's still in here.
You got that, Brendan?
Got it.
How, how do we identify that, Brendan, so we know internally that it's not necessary to send a dump sticker to a piece of undeveloped property?
So that has to do with the listers and they started that project last year. Um, we also have a policy for this and it depends on, we'd have to review the policy. It depends on how the land is.
Okay, so, so the, the review and change of a policy is not going to happen before the end of budget season?
No.
Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so. So I, I guess for now that stands until we, we visit that.
Do we have any sense about how that affects or will affect revenues in terms of what we might need to do with the sticker price to compensate for that?
I, I don't think there's, my-
That premature at this point.
Well, I think, I, I, Dave, can, can you clarify your point on that? So that-
I can recall years ago where it was waived where land only, um, did not get charged a sticker because um, it didn't have any buildings, doesn't have any power, doesn't have any septic. So there's no improvements at all. It may or may not be fields, it could be woods. Um, and it was the sticker thing. So, you know, the sticker fees in the past have been twenty-five to forty dollars. It happens to be the highest it has been in a long time, um, right now. And I don't know who handled it. It just got done. Uh, it wasn't really that complicated. I don't know how many parcels in town fit that criteria. I'm guessing the listers know that. I don't know. I know there's about sixteen hundred and fifty parcels, but maybe a little bit more by now, sixteen sixty or two subdivisions or something like that. But I can't tell you how many are, have houses. The majority does.
So I, I, it's, so I'm gonna try to clarify that, not that you didn't, but, um, the, the, um, the sticker is fifty-seven dollars, uh, if, if this budget passes, fifty-seven forty. And if you have a piece of property that has no development on it, then it's not generating waste. You're paying fifty-seven dollars for a sticker you don't need. In, in, in Mr. Fuller's case, and maybe in many others, um, he, he has a house, he has a farm, and he has, he, he receives stickers for those and uses the, the recycling center and that's appropriate. But he's also being charged for extra properties that are not generating. And we're also printing stickers for those that we, you know, again, without knowing the numbers though, um, it's-
And is that any different from people who have pickup service and also pay for, for a-
Yeah, yeah, I'd, I'd say it's very different. Sure. First of all, it's a choice to, I mean, you're, even if you live in this town, you're still paying sticker price and, uh, and then you're gonna hire somebody to pick up your waste. Uh, but this is, this is a piece of property that's sitting there not generating waste. You're being billed for, and you're, and you're, you're being billed for it somewhere else too, and, and you're using it and contributing too. So I don't think there's a loss in revenue on this. It, it, well, there is, isn't there? Yeah, yeah, fifty-seven forty based on the number of properties, which we don't know.
Yeah, and I think according to the policy, um, it says here, "The select board shall establish an assessment rate annually at the same time that the annual tax rate is set." "Each parcel of land within the town of Weathersfield shall be assessed a solid waste management fee each tax year." "For the purpose of this policy, contiguous parcels of land in common ownership shall be treated as one parcel, um, for the purpose of assessment in the same manner as tax bills are issued." "For the purpose of this policy, non-contiguous parcels of land in common ownership, which are undeveloped with any structure, shall be treated as one parcel for the purpose of assessment." "For the purpose of this policy, non-contiguous parcels of land which are undeveloped with any structural, structures in which sheer common ownership with a parcel developed any structures shall be treated as one parcel for the purposes of this policy."
Okay, so we're, we're bound by policy anyway, at, at this time, until we review that.
So I think when, if we want to review the policy, we can do that, and then we can determine at that time what the change would be. I would assume if we're reducing the number of parcels that we, we charge, then we'd have the total number of parcels remaining and those, and then obviously the fixed costs would be divided by that number. The permit sticker would probably increase at that time.
I, I was gonna say the number of parcels is, is important to know going into that discussion, but for, I, I would say at this point, that's not, it's not really relevant to, to this budget, excuse me. Um, any other discussion on the solid waste budget? If-
I did follow what you said before. So when somebody just brought up the fact that it is similar to curbside pickup, it is, I think, with this exception, which you noted previously, a person who, um, still, I can't do it because on three of my properties, three or four of them, they don't have any buildings on them. So you brought up the fact about recycling. Well, some, so somebody even with curbside pickup could still lower their curbside, although the, the containers are sixty-five dollars a month. I've already found all this out. But they could in fact use the station to recycle and reduce their curbside. I don't think they go by weight. I think they go by container. So in that case, then the sticker kind of policy would be important. But with land only, you know, I'm not generating any recyclable either, so I don't know. The good news for the transfer station, I've finally seen some, which is a huge, it's a, it's a big deal. They finally opened the door to recover ag waste materials, plastics. So you know all these, sometimes you see around the-
Marshmallows.
Yes. Well, before, all that would go into the compactor.
Okay.
Not anymore. I don't know what's happened because generally there's a bunch of crap inside, because it's usually hay. It's not, I've never seen anybody wrap corn. So the plastic is very dirty and hard to handle. But I did see now in New York and now I think in Vermont, it's appearing where, um, there's something going on to recover that and it's gaining ground. That's a big deal because plastic will not decompose. And it's heavy. That heavy, that plastic, that white stuff's heavy.
Thank you, Dave. Um, any other discussion on the solid waste budget?
What is the option that you're, see, I, I'm going by this that you gave us. So I see like five options again on this.
Yeah, so all of those options are the same. There's no changes in the options for the solid waste budget. I just did that for consistency throughout all the budget documents.
But the, yeah, but the numbers are the same all the way across.
Yeah, for this, for this solid waste. And then what I figured is if there were any, if there was any feedback or changes, then I could make them different options at that time. But option one is the same as option two, three, four, and five.
Okay. Any, any discussion?
Yeah, I do. So when you go on, and I wish these lines were numbered, so, um, but they're not. So when you go on the expense side, is there a reason why, uh, operators' wages are different than attendance wages? Two or three percent? Why, why, why is that? Why didn't it consistently follow the, the rest of the town? Why didn't it just like say two and a half?
Where are you?
So if you go down under expenses, so you have to scroll that one up, but on the, on the, um, if you line one or two, it says operator's wages. Um, and then the next line says attendance wages. If you look across when it says FY twenty-five, twenty-six changes, one says two and one says three. Percent.
First page of the solid waste budget.
Of the solid waste.
Yes, you gotta go under expenses.
Yeah.
Uh, um, so when we, when we hired the new attendant, we replaced the attendant at a higher salary. So that, it, it looks like, I mean, that's not the cola. So that's when we hired that person, they had a, it wasn't-
I got you. So, so you, but they're, I'm just trying to be consistent with pay. You gave this, the transfer station two and a half percent raise in pay?
Yes.
Okay, good. That's, that's, that's all I wanted to know. There's a little bit misleading here when it says two, a flat two zero, and then a three zero.
Yep.
Yep. So in other words, the, if we had an attendant that resigned and moved, um, and we hired a new one at a slightly higher rate in, in pay. Um, I think it's a half a percent more than what it was hired at before.
But you just clarified it by saying that's not the cola, which is, that, that's all that I wanted to know.
Yep.
Any other questions on this budget? Do I hear a motion to accept and approve the fiscal year twenty-six solid waste proposed budget? I hear a second. We have a motion in a second to approve the fiscal year twenty-six solid waste budget. Any further discussion on the motion? Dave?
Is that Article eight under our wa, warning that we now have on our packet? So it reads that way? You're not, you need to get the dollar amount in with the motion, I think.
Yes, you do. Thank you, Dave.
Or you could say approve Article eight is written for the two, the twenty-five town meeting, right?
Okay, so the proposed budget. Ninety-three thousand, one hundred and sixteen, is that correct?
No, it's four hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty.
Oh yeah, there it is, way down the line. I was gonna say, that's an awful low. Four, four hundred and twelve thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars would be the total expense budget of the solid waste. Correct, Brendan?
Correct.
Okay, so that, that would be the number, four twelve three sixty. We'll include that in the, in the, uh, in the motion. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Any abstentions? Hearing none, the motion carries, it's unanimous. That budget is, is accepted. Okay, now let's move into the rest of the fiscal year twenty-six budget. We start with the general fund. So I know that Nathan contacted the town manager and asked for a, um, review of the budget with a one or two percent decrease. Brendan, you want to take us through that?
Yeah, uh, in the last meeting, the select board ruled out options one and five. Um, and we're looking at options two, three, and four. The, if we reduce the general fund and highway budget by one percent, that's equivalent to thirty-two thousand, ninety dollars and ninety-one cents. And basically the question was, if, what would a one percent reduction in these budgets look like? Where would we, where would we pull the money from? Um, so under option one, it, under option one of the one percent reduction budget, we would remove administration expense for employee awards and recognition. Um, so that's, that's the line item for the town's Christmas party, um, and, and gift cards and so forth for, for the holidays. Um, we also use that line item to send flowers and so forth. Um, we're looking at this strictly as in like what would, how, what could we remove from the budget without significantly damaging services is the way that I looked at this. Um, so that was one of the first, first line items to go, as that wouldn't alter, alter services in my opinion. It would alter morale, but not services. Um, reduces fire department stipends by twenty thousand, from eighty thousand to sixty thousand. Reduce the part-time police officer hours by five hours per week, um, which reduces the part-time officer line item by thirty-six hundred and forty dollars and twenty cents. Um, so what that would do is instead of having ten hours per day on the weekends, you would have seven hours per day on the weekends, basically at twenty bucks per hour. Reduce highway department paving by thirty-nine fifty seventy-one. Um, so we have highway department paving in there at eighty-nine thousand, and we changed that to eighty-five thousand, which is our highway pavement management plan calls for a hundred thousand dollars. Um, so we would be shorting that line item by fifteen thousand. Option two, we would reduce highway department legal expenses, um, by five thousand from ten thousand to five thousand. Um, so we had to increase that line item due to some road issues in town. Um, that will be mostly covered by insurance. In the case that there are overages, we'd have to look at reserve funds like the rainy day fund, um, to cover those legal, legal fees. Um, reduce administration expense for employee awards and recognition from forty-five hundred to two thousand, so we wouldn't completely eliminate um, the holiday gatherings and awards and recognition. We would just reduce it by twenty-five hundred. Um, reduce fire department stipends by fifteen thousand, um, from eighty thousand to sixty-five thousand. Reduce highway department paving by ninety-five hundred, um, from eighty-nine thousand to seventy-nine thousand. So those are two options for a one percent reduction budget. A two percent reduction budget would call for sixty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty-one dollars and eighty-two cents. Option one, there's three options here that I listed. Um, we do have a six-person highway crew. Um, and we can convert that to a five-person highway crew. There is currently a longtime employee that is retiring and we would not fill that position under that, under this option. This would remove an estimated eighty thousand from the highway department budget. Um, and again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have Ray kind of stand up and explain some of the impacts that would have on his highway crew. Um, option two would be reduce highway crew from a six-person crew to a five-and-a-half-person crew. So it would basically hire the position part-time. So instead of having forty hours, you'd have twenty hours. Reduce fire department stipends by ten thousand, um, from eighty thousand to seventy thousand, and eliminate administration expenses for awards and recognition, um, of forty-five hundred. Excuse the typo in option two, part two. Uh, it's not sixty-five thousand and seventy. And then option three kind of spreads that two percent reduction across various line items. Um, we would reduce the fire department stipends by twenty thousand, reduce the paving line item by twenty thousand, reduce highway legal expenses by five thousand, reduce the part-time officer hours by five hours per week, remove administration expenses for employee, employee awards and recognition of forty-five hundred, remove highway expenses for awards and recognition of twelve hundred, reduce five-on-one C three appropriations by twenty percent or fifty-nine, hundred and fifty-four dollars, um, reduce highway department repairs and supplies by forty-eight hundred, um, from seventy-five thousand to seventy thousand. Ray?
Um, actually, before we go to Ray, I, I wanna go to Nate. He's the one who requested this.
Okay. Yeah, and I mean, right, the next question that's gonna be for Ray is like, what is the actual impact, right? Like, what is, uh, what is reducing, uh, the paving? What is that actually? Like, what aren't we paving to do that, right? Like, um, so that would be the, the next question. I would.
I've got a question before we hear from Ray as well.
Go ahead.
I thought you, I thought we need to separate out here. I mean, the highway fund is, is separate legally from the general fund. And you started the conversation asking Brandon to come off with the general fund.
General fund.
So we can't, I don't think it's fair that we splash these two conversations in this way. Um,
That was probably my, my, my mistake, because I was looking at the overall tax impact. When I, when I was looking, when I talked, when I sent the request to Brandon, well, that was my intention.
No, that's okay. I'm just talking about, you know, they're, they're total, two totally different things to talk about. Um,
Okay, so, so-
Respond to that.
Yeah, go ahead.
Um, that, they are no longer separated legally. Um, that went away. John, are you aware of that?
No.
Well, I think for us though, I mean, I, you know, we've always done it this way where the, you know, the highway is, I mean-
Oh, I, I, I know what you, what you're saying, and I agree with that, Dave.
It means like a million or a million-two, uh, budget by itself, and I don't think it's, I don't think it's good to be-
So, so what we can do is, um, stay within the general fund and apply only those criteria on this list that applied to the general fund in the first discussion. Is that fair enough?
Yes.
Okay. So that just means that we're not talking to Ray right this minute because we're in the general fund. So, so with the general fund, we have, uh, awards and recognition, we have fire department, we have part-time police officer. Down below, it's mostly, okay, then, uh, option, I think option two there. Administration expense there, that's option two, that, and fire department, and that's highway, that's highway, that's highway. Just identifying these as we go through so I keep an eye on them. It's highway, highway. Recognitions. Fire department, paving is highway, highway. Sir. Hey. Uh, the five-on-one C of appropriations is general fund?
Correct.
Okay, I got it. All right, so let's deal with the one percent, uh, I, I guess first, or any questions within the one percent category? Uh, removal of administration expenses for employee recog, awards and recognition, uh, the fire department stipends, um, the part-time officer reduction in hours. And, uh, uh, fire department stipends, again, there's a couple of different, there's two options there in the one percent. Uh, so all of those are on the table. Anybody wants to start firing questions, Dave?
What was the, uh, so was anything to do with the fire department included in the general fund budget?
Yes.
All of it was? So the dollar amounts that you expanded, no matter whether it was fifty, sixty, twenty, eighty thousand was incorporated in the, in the final general fund budget and not a separate article?
Um, option four is a separate article. So in the general fund, um-
I only see option threes here. Maybe I got the wrong.
Yeah, up on, so in the actual budget document and the general fund, these are the same budgets, one through five. They just fund the budgets differently using differences in fund balance. Um, the select board ruled out option one and the select board ruled out option five. Option two and three include fire department stipends in the budget of eighty thousand. Option four assumes that it would go out on a special article for eighty thousand.
So I just want to clarify, we're on the same page. Is it this long page with the colors on it? I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing.
Mm-hmm.
This one that says- This one that says one through five on the the heading says proposed budget summary. Is that?
Yep.
It's so small, the print.
Yep.
All right.
And one and five are out. We already did that. We disposed of those at the last meeting. So is there? Is there a desire to have a conversation, first of all, about reducing these budgets by one percent or two percent?
I guess, I guess, so here's the things I'm thinking about, right? I'm thinking about creating, getting closer to a flat tax rate, right? So that that it's predictable and it doesn't move up and down, which means. Not using budget surpluses to buy down the tax rate, which. Budget over time, right? And, you know, and Brandon and I talked about this is. There's sometimes I think it's good, the budget committee already did the work and going line by line, right? And I think there's a there's merit in asking the person managing knows all the projects better to be like, all right. If you have to reduce this by a percent. What, how do we still function? How do we get what we need, our priorities done, right? And I think there's merit in understanding the overall tax impact of the budget that we put forward, right? And I did mean to check with the school and figure out what, you know, what came up last night. I did not do that. So that you can understand school in town, right? What are we gonna ask taxpayers for, right? And so that, so my curiosity is what does one percent do to the tax rate if we're not using? Fun balances to pay down the tax rate? What is it? What does that look like for for?
Take a look at option number one, look at the total on the on the on the budget. And subtract thirty two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars. Is that correct? Right number?
Yeah.
Like that.
It would reduce the increase from from two hundred thousand down to a hundred and seventy or a hundred and sixty eight thousand.
But I thought you said you threw out option one, so I'd like to.
But the but the question was relevant to to option number one. What does the what does the budget look like? And option one is just the budget with no, no. Fun balances injected into it. Okay, it's just a straight budget. That's what option one is. So if you look at option one and subtract the one percent from those totals, that's the that's the question that that Nate just asked.
Because I think you start there and then you use your fund balance after you figure out what. From my brain, I would use then think about the fund balance on where we were last year to try to get it to level, right? Because the other thing we number I think we should be watching is, right, the increased in our grand list, right? Should be one of the other numbers that we look at when we're thinking about making decisions for taxpayers.
But the fund balances come from either. Overage in income changes. Or taxing everybody a little bit more, but you kept it, so it's not spent. So it's either one or the other. So in other words, if the general fund, if like the police revenue happens to be up. More than what was budgeted, that that could be. Or Brandon didn't spend money, which I pointed out to the last meeting of of I'm sticking totally on the general fund. With somebody not hired in finance for extended period of time. That actually, the money stays there. So that is part of the fund balance. So. You know, either we do two things with it, either we, which we've tried to do always in the past, either place it in reserves so that we don't have to have. Future spending or use it to, we usually do a combination.
Yes.
To help with the the next year's taxes and have some in reserves. So it's both. So I, you know, I've 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 warned that both our staff is full right now. I do not see us reaching a point where we're gonna have fund balances derived from non staffing. Because we're staffed.
Well, that that's true, as we enter into the budget, that's that's an accurate statement, but you you don't know what's gonna happen next month. Any one of our employees could get an offer somewhere else and and be gone, and that could hit us in either a positive or a negative way. And we we might save a month or two in in wages. But we might be hit with a forty thousand dollar increase in in the actual wages for the replacement, so you you. You know, how's it going to affect you? Is that's really kind of undetermined.
I'm interested in learning, Brandon, why did you choose those ones that you chose and not methodically? Strike injury over everybody. I mean, that's a, that's what a politician does, you know, you say if somebody is asking to lower it by one percent, okay, everybody's in the boat. Everybody's gonna swim ninety nine percent and maybe one percent might not.
So I I look at it as far as how can I adjust? How can I adjust the budget and still provide the same level of services, like without cutting services to the public? What are the line items that we would? Who would notice at the least? And I don't, I don't think. I mean, you're gonna notice it regardless. I guess the only reason I chose the fire department stipends is because it's something new. And it was, it seemed easier to reduce. It seemed easier.
I didn't change my voice.
It seemed easier to reduce that.
I'm not Alexa, I promise.
Sorry.
And then it's okay. And then part time hours are also easier to to decrease. Whereas when you have a full time employee, you'd be changing them to part time status, non benefits eligible, which would. Significantly impact that employee.
I'm more curious about, and maybe you spoke before about this, so if you're just looking down at all this and you pick any one of these options. Did I hear correctly, like when you look at? Land use up everywhere by like a hundred percent. Did that get offset by income somewhere, or is that wholly on the property taxes?
So if we go to the land use budget, and we can do that real quick, I'll pull it up on the screen. So yeah, the the land use budget is up, but there's an income, there's a revenue coming in from Rockingham. For thirty eight thousand four hundred and twenty six dollars under all five options.
So is so, and I'm just pretending to be somebody who's reading a town report and not involved, and I haven't really been paying attention to this. But anytime something strikes out and says a hundred and three percent for any reason at all, it's a red flag. So are you saying that it's really not a hundred and three, that it works out where it's thirty eight thousand worth of income to offset something, so it's not a hundred and three?
Yeah, the land use budget's up a penny in tax revenue.
Different question, that's thirty three thousand.
Yep.
And a penny is.
Roughly a penny, thirty.
A penny is one point zero four percent.
Yep.
On the budget.
I just use that as an example. So when you when you listed off what you thought you could do. As lower than one percent, and we haven't, I'm only on the general fund, you listed those. So it's your decision about who is affected and who's not.
I think it's it's ultimately the select board's decision if you guys agree with these. These options or not. And I'm not saying that I agree with these options. I don't think. I think all of these impact the town. The question was if what would a one percent or two percent? Reduction budget look like? In other words, like if the select board voted to decrease the budget by one or two percent. Where could we go with the least amount of impact?
So Mike, did you do, did somebody, did you do the math here? Did I hear you earlier where only on the general funding now, it was thirty thousand? What did you come up with a total on on this? Did you come up with a dollar amount from the reductions of one percent or not?
Reduction of one percent is thirty two thousand.
Did you have a calculator to do that?
No, he he, well, I saw it earlier when it was, it's right on this paper in front of you. Thirty two thousand ninety dollars and ninety one cents.
Right.
Oh, 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 yeah.
So so now you're splitting, like, that wasn't the question that was asked. So you're changing the question, which would change.
That's okay.
The response.
Somebody.
Roughly twenty eight thousand, right?
Is that what it is? Well, we do separate out the articles here. So at the end of the day, I don't know that we're gonna get together here or not, but the articles are for for. When you read the warning, it does say that we we do separate out. The general fund, shall the voters vote, you know, of which X is for taxes, and we do separate out the highway fund. So at some moment here, you do have to separate out what those dollars are. Hundred percent.
So if you're looking at one percent of the general fund, it would be nineteen thousand seven hundred and fifty five dollars and fifty cents.
I I I used the numbers that you had in option one, and it comes out to twenty eight thousand one forty. If you just add up, if you take option one out of the one percent and add up the ones that are in the, there's three of them that are. The general fund, they 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 add up to twenty eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars.
Sorry, I didn't understand the question.
It's okay. You okay?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay.
So do we have the number then?
Twenty eight thousand one hundred and forty dollars is the reduction to the general fund.
That's option one.
That's option one. And the balance from thirty two ninety would be from the highway. Which was three thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars and seventy one cents. It's right on the piece of paper.
I was looking at it more as in like bottom line tax impact.
Which is how the question was posed.
Yep.
I look at it a different way, Brandon, when you just said ultimately it's the select boards. I don't agree with that at all, because as I said in the last meeting. I feel all of my service here at this board is the job, the board of this job is to hire a town manager, and I've been here for every single one of them. And then we listen to the budgets and we adopt whatever the dollar amount it is to operate the town and the highway and the solid waste for all these years. And they get placed on the warning for the voters to vote. But the town manager has the freedom, like you have, if if there's too. Orderly or to give us reports about the finance and and to and to obviously not come in the red. But you are given some latitude on working within the money, and the select board has no business in that after the voters vote. And the last piece of a service of a board member is to recognize the townspeople who put us here, the ability to pay the bill. That is the three phases of this board. So when we pass a motion here, whatever it's gonna be for the general fund, we're trying to, which is I think where you were headed, Nate. When you look at this, the whole proposed budget of the five options. And the recognized cost of living is two and a half percent. You have to defend publicly why we are spending the money that we are and and whatever the tax rate. Happens to fall. That that's the bottom line on all this, every year. Right now, the the cost of living was pegged at two and a half percent, and we're asking. On option two, three, and four, if I'm reading this right, that. Tax rate would be either, help me out, somebody, isn't it, like? Don't know what line I'm looking for, but.
Looking at a, well, the tax rate is a, you're not gonna find that.
A percent. No, I'm just talking about percent. So that's up there. It's either we're gonna be what, eleven, eight, or seven? Right?
Let me let me pull up the tax rate calculations. So under option one, it would be a thirteen percent increase.
Skip option one.
Option two is an eight point nine percent increase. Option three is a seven point five five percent increase. Option four is a. Six point zero nine percent increase. I just want to clarify, the cost of living adjustment for employees is. Totally separate from the differences that you're seeing in the budget. There's a lot of different things that impact the budget, such as. Insurance, just regular insurance, workers' compensation rates. And various other line items throughout the budget that are not increasing at the line of two point five percent. And many of those budget line items are line items that are not in our control. For example. One really good example is the website. We were paying two thousand dollars a year, and now it's thirty five hundred a year. And that's something that I brought up to the select board during ARPA discussions, because it was. There was a, there was potential to do a new website and pay a hundred and seventy dollars per year. So that's one of those line items we tried to catch in advance. But it's also an example that the website's not increasing at two point five percent. And there's examples of that scattered throughout the budget.
But I think the the better calculation would be relative to the grand list, right?
Yeah, and that's only a half a percent per year.
Right, this is a problem, right?
Yeah, the town's not growing at the same rate as the budgets are growing.
And we don't know that rate typically until after the election. Sad to say.
Yeah.
I think it's in May. I think the listers reconcile the grand list, but through the state, through May.
Yeah, just in time for us to set the tax rate.
Yes. Correct.
Yeah.
And every other year, it has worked out in our favor, Nate. The grand list has grown by one or one and a half percent, which on the big scheme of things, does what you said, which is to. Come really close to the spending amount. Our problem is that, and I keep saying the same song, the. The largest taxpayer in town is able to use through the law, the. Formula for the CLA, which then absorbed some of the increase in the grand list. So I mean, that's where it is. I.
Yeah, and that's gonna get corrected with the reappraisal.
Yeah, but I've got this new theory, which I've I've floated to you and Brandon, is that they are already at a hundred percent because they upgraded their system. So when they get appraised, which has already been appealed by the state, they will be at a hundred percent assessment. And so what will happen then is our tax rate will come down because everybody else's properties, like yours and mine, are gonna go. Considerably higher. So that company may in fact win by the tax rate fall, and we'll have to make up the difference.
Well, yeah, but the, but the difference will be in the C A, CLA after the appraisal. The CLA will go to a hundred percent, which means they now pay a hundred percent property tax.
Yep.
Or personal property tax on on the.
No, it's just the assessment. It's not, you confuse that with the business tax, that's not it. It's the, it's the overall utility, that's where it is. I know, John, is, we talked about it. And so what I'm saying is, they're already assessed to their upgrades of like, it's it's a, it's a big number. I mean, they.
But they're only, because our CLA is below eighty five, well, it doesn't matter, it's below a hundred, whatever the CLA is, that's the percentage they pay. So even though they're assessed at a hundred percent, maybe that's four hundred thousand dollars, but but they're.
Their tax bill is.
The CLA is at seventy four, then they're only being taxed on seventy, they're only paying seventy four percent of that tax.
All of that's correct. What I'm saying is, think of it this way, your house, they don't do it, remember?
What I'm, what I, let me, I'm sorry.
Yep.
But 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 what I'm trying to say is, when the CLA gets fixed through the reappraisal, that money is gonna come back to us.
Yes.
Those are big numbers.
Yes, but what I'm saying is that they're already at a hundred percent, they're acting as though, which is you and I've already talked and asked why this isn't done. At a closing of a house, why isn't the new number in? And it's not.
And that's that's the state law.
I don't think we're gonna solve that one here.
We're not.
Right.
I do think that the CLA is going to crash again. But I am hoping that the net effect of the grand list that Brandon has used in these budgets is going to be the effect of our growth. Because there's been several new houses is going to outweigh the decline that Velco is going to use.
Did you add anything to the grand list or is this uh, last year's?
This is last year's grand list.
Correct.
Okay, so there's whatever comes in.
Whatever it is, it is.
It will be an increase in the grand list, which will mean that.
The only issue will be in June when you have to set the tax rate.
Yes.
And then then it's all final.
And 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 quite frankly, there's a couple of other things that happen too, and 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 they can go either way. They can go up or down, and those are other monies that come from the state or or uh, that we don't see again until after the election.
No, that's that's really important to know. So that is non-property tax revenue.
Yes.
State aid. And you're not anticipating any other state aid changes?
All right. So what do we want to do with this budget? As as far as first of all, talking now about the the one and two percent discounts, is that something you want to pursue and try to figure out how to do that? Or do you want to move into a discussion about the individual ones? Uh, for instance, the fire stipends, that's that's a big, that's a big hit either way. Either on the budget or in the cuts. Either way, those are, that that's a discussion that you add.
Yep, and I kind of want to hear from Ray on the highway side.
That won't be until we get to the highway budget though.
Yep, I'm just, I am trying to look at it as a whole picture, right, and understand. I know, I can say where I think I am on the fire department, uh, which would I would, I would put it on a special article. Yeah, not because um, you know, I know this history was brought up last time, right? I don't know all the history, uh, though, you know, people have been trying to fill me in. Uh, my belief is that it deserves public discussion. We've put it, we, you know, the select board uh, initially put it on the ballot, right? Uh, the first time it was asked. Um, different, this is a very different approach. I think this is a better approach. Um, and I think that that deserves public discussion, and I and I think that's how you drive the public discussion.
And um, I'm sorry.
I do, I mean, I think it's a big change, right? You're onboarding a, you're changing the way you do business, right? You're onboarding a large group of employees. When we're talking about the model that's uh, set for us, um, there are lots of questions I would have. Um, I, you know, like, there's parts that I think that we would be, you know, as we do that onboarding, you would have to have job descriptions for all the paid positions. Right? So all those, all that stuff would be clear. And so then maybe that's all done. I don't, I haven't seen it, but maybe it's all done. Uh, but I think that deserves a I think when you ask that question to the public once, uh, you have to continue that dialogue with the public. And uh, once it, you know, once it's passed, then it becomes part of the way you do business. But until that point, I think that's a public dialogue. The number attached to it, I'm not sure where I am on, right? But the the concept, uh, regardless if it's twenty or eighty thousand, I think has to be part of the public.
And one part I want to add to that is I recall it being said that um, putting it on as this could be a slap in the face to the fire departments. It could also go the other way. It it, you know, I personally think that this will would pass as an article. And I think that that's that's a that's a show of support for what our fire departments are doing. It can be looked at either way. That's all I'm trying to say. And if some people want to look at it in a negative.
Well, I think that's the intention of the board, right? If the intention of the board is like, we're going to put it there so it fails, that it would be a slap in the face, right?
That that.
If the intention is that we need to have public dialogue, um, uh, I think that's different.
That's correct. Yeah, I agree. Dave?
Two things. Um, I'll I'll talk to the fire department in a minute. The um, I clearly want to be in the position of uh, and I see Ray in the the body language, and he's a little shaken by this thing. I'm I'm off the table with touching the highway department. Off. I don't even need to talk about it. Um, second, with regard to the fire department, I wish I was involved in the model that Brandon created. Um, it's clear to me that uh, with the passing of Darren Spalding, that the um, that there's uh, we're in a, we're in a um, a change. And nobody expects it and and it just happens. Um, I sent Mike a note earlier, and I'm going to change right now with the farm. So I don't like the model that's being presented. Clearly, I think it's the town's job to provide the fire departments with everything they need. That's why I stepped out and trying to start this fund for the after effects kind of these things. I talked with Derek Gurney about it, and and he said, Dave, you don't know how much this means because at that fire that Josh noted, I don't know who arranged it, but Dunkin' Donuts went down there to to give him like gallons of coffee and stuff. And and everyone, I didn't go, and obviously they they all flocked to it. Those kinds of things seem small, but they're big. Um, for me, I, any one of these situations, I've always tried to put myself not as a board member, but as part of what's going on. And I can clearly say that if I was a member of the of the fire department, or and two of them, or twenty seven of them, I don't want politicians in my business. Um, it's all warm and fuzzy now. You have a friendly town manager who's young and so forth, but there will come a day when perhaps that we see those job descriptions that Nate described, and somebody might be on the way out, and you don't know it. And I would have created a model that said that the town is on the hook for everything. And that, but the members clearly are in charge of their business as operations. Um, I think that can be achieved because Brandon said that um, that he he drafted this new model by himself, which is good. Um, I don't so I don't want to go to town meeting with a um proposal that would have any uh, chance of failing. And so I guess that's where I'm at. I I do, I do agree a little bit with Nate when it went out that one time, but that was for a single person. With a really lot of money designated to them at first, and part of Weatherfield's history is we have twenty eight thousand five hundred acres with two sites. And topography, it's just hard to cover between twelve miles between both sites. So.
All right, so I you 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 threw one at me that made me kind of chuckle just a little. That was the what the comment about the politician. Because before that, you said, I wish I'd have been involved in this so I could have helped create it, but you're the politician.
Yeah, but I didn't know what's coming until January ninth.
I I'm just saying, it did make me laugh. Um, anyway, uh, and the new model by himself. Uh, Brendan did not create only the financial structure or financial plan by himself. Most of this was created through the um, um, committee that you created that was coming to, which is the two fire departments working together to create their business.
Did anybody run by, did you run by VLCT?
Hang on, I wasn't quite done yet. Um, the fire departments uh, are I I went to a couple of those meetings. They were open meetings, and and you could have gone to those as well. Anybody could. Um, and the the discussion there a- about the transition is that there needs to be a slow transition for this. Um, and that they need to work that out, and they are working on it. Is that correct, Josh? And that you are, you, the fire departments are working on that. Yeah, through the task force. Yeah, so you don't need us up here to tell you what to do over there. You just, back to your point, Dave, they need the money to do their job. Um, I had a conversation with Brandon earlier today where I suggested possibly looking at the numbers in this in this formula a little differently. Um, I think this formula, and I didn't understand this, but I think this formula pays the chiefs and administrative individuals, but you don't get any of the pot of going to the calls. And I I suggested maybe there was a way to do that differently where the pot increased from thirty thousand. And the 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 stipend amounts came down, and 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 there was kind of a combination, but even the chiefs or administration with the that are also doing response are are getting paid for response. And hi- his comment to that was that there were a lot of things he could do with this formula. It's not set in stone. He, you know, it it's it's still a work in progress. Back to your point, Dave, if we give him the money, he can figure it out, and he and he will.
Is there a way, I don't know whether anybody did it, where an amount of money would be okay with me in the general fund to start this, but um, significant inroads could be made that do not rely on property taxes. So I know August and I talked after the last meeting, and he said, you know, you know, it wouldn't bother me a bit to have like twenty five dollar uh, fee for burning permits or something. Some other source that would be able to navigate its way through um that that way.
Um, I I I want to respond to that as well. Um, and it's not really a direct answer. Um, earlier you brought up three positions or points of the of this board. And I felt you left one of them out, and that was the fact that it is also our responsibility to make sure that the services are provided by the town. Uh, and it is the funding mechanism that ultimately does that. The the town manager and the departments are working on that together. Um, I I I think that's something that's far ahead of anywhere we've been in many years.
I think you and I agree that when we did that, we we we've tried the last few years to significantly increase the the gear, the non-wheel fund. I I I don't take a backseat to anybody's comment and say that we've somehow been absent. I I just don't.
Oh, no, I don't either.
You could prove it by the books.
No.
Um, I I just.
Uh, but but.
I'm trying to get through this budget, and to me, when Nate asked the the uh, the, it is a a option two, three, and four, or maybe I'm wrong, maybe one of them is a special article. Are they are they all incorporated incorporated in the general fund or not? Four's out.
Uh, yeah.
Two and three are in.
Two and three include the fire department stipends in the budget. Um, and then four assumes it would go out to a special article.
What happens if you plug instead of, what happens if you plug instead of sixty or eighty thousand? What happens if the board takes a leap and says twenty five thousand to start, and this is a work in progress? Because on December ninth, when you forwarded, on on November sixth at our meeting, there was no reference of any money whatsoever. On December ninth, we came to a meeting, and there was like eighteen thousand or something like that for stipends. And then on January ninth, we have another meeting, and it's blown to eighty thousand. What happens if the board feels, okay, this is a path that we want to go down, we want to help, this is a start? What does that do to the percentage of a tax increase? It drops it, right, dramatically? But it also navigates its way through a start.
It does navigate its way to a start. Um, I think I think a better start would be closer to sixty. Um, whereas twenty five, when we talked about it at the budget committee, it seemed like it wouldn't, like if you look at the allocation formula for firefighters.
But again, Brandon, like our role, special article, from my perspective, right, the board hasn't agreed, special article, dollar amount. I'm not sure. I hundred percent uh, my job to micromanage how you figured this out, right? Is it important to me, like, if the town decides to go to an employee model, right? Is it important to me that you know what job responsibilities are? Yep. I don't think I have to go through and go through every job description, but making sure everybody you're hiring to do a job, which is essentially the change, right? Even though we're talking about pennies, right? We're not talking about
Yeah.
salaries, right? We're not, um, uh, that becomes your job, right? In this, and that's rolling away because it'll be your job to oversee the chief in whatever model, right?
Yep.
And so you figuring out how to equitably distribute that or use that funds to support the fire department becomes job, not necessarily our job to sit there and talk about what percentage.
Yeah, and I totally agree with that, Nate. I just, I'm not sure, um, like, the twenty five thousand dollar number is going to get the job fully done, I think. Um, we'd need to go up a little bit more on that.
What is, what is the current total of stipends for the administrative side of the fire department?
Yeah, without this consideration, that's a good question, Mike.
Uh, four thousand five hundred and ninety dollars, and that pays um, two fire chiefs.
In any other budget, it was that, it was under five thousand dollars?
Yes.
And so that's two chiefs, that's it?
That's it, yep.
And then everybody else under that doesn't get a stipend, they actually just get paid for response time out of balance. Is that correct? Or are there, or are there other?
I thought you were talking about status quo.
No, since to the question.
Okay.
Nate is pointing out that we don't know what the staff is at the fire department. I think we do. I think the fire departments know who they are, that the chiefs, the captains, the C one, C two, C three. Uh, how many people are receiving stipends at the fire department, and what are their, what are their job titles?
Currently?
Yes, right now.
It's a status quo, four thousand five hundred and ninety dollars.
Two chiefs.
Right.
Okay. And what's what's planned for the new on this?
So under option six, which is the budget committee's recommendation, it would be twelve thousand.
And what are the positions?
Um, we did change the position slightly, so you'd have a chief, assistant chief, two deputies, a captain, and a lieutenant. And the reason for that was having two stations. For like the assistant chief and having two deputies and so forth, which I I understand we're not going to get into the structure, and I do agree that is something that we would be working out.
Well, in order to put a dollar amount in, you do have to get into structure.
Which, and well, and and Nate was questioning whether that had happened, and I I I was under the impression that there was some structure already being created, and this is it. This is seven individuals that are on stipends. And according to this formula, those seven individuals do not get the response stipend.
Yeah, but Mike, they're required to respond to a percentage of calls within the stipends. Um, and that's to to be determined.
I I'm talking about the upper, I'm I'm talking about the hierarchy at the top.
That's what I'm talking about as well.
But they're required to respond, but without extra compensation.
Correct.
Okay.
So that includes their duties and responsibilities plus responses.
Okay, and that's twelve thousand dollars that's that's designated for those seven positions.
Yeah, and like I said, we can structure this a little bit differently. Um, and we we will be talking about this further with the with the fire department committee as a whole.
So all, so so this is the, this is the administration of the fire department, not counting you, but the chiefs, assistant deputies, captain, lieutenant, seven people. Um, and then there are now thirty firefighters or twenty three more firefighters.
See, the number of firefighters could fluctuate. The allocation of the pot for response stipends would not, um, it's fixed. Which is why I believe that this is a really good structure because it prevents us from having any overages.
Wha- but what but what is that staffing goal? For lack of a better term, uh, is it twenty three more firefighters or thirty more firefighters?
Twenty three.
Twenty three, spur total of thirty.
And that's estimated. I I don't want to speak out of term right now. Again, I'd like to really discuss that more with the fire department committee.
Okay, but there but there is a discussion that's ongoing as far as what the staffing and 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 what this is going to look like, because that's what I wanted to get to.
No, I mean, I realize that. I mean, based on proposal, I would assume that, I mean, I would assume that when, you know, the town voted to put it in place, probably the commission would bring it to the whole department and Radify it in some, some way, right? To get the buy-in of all, everyone that's.
Believe in June.
As far as a structure, maybe I, I'm not, I don't think that's our job other than.
No, it's not our job. It, it seemed to me that you were asking a question about making a proposal on something that's undefined and I think it is somewhat defined. And I'm just making that clear.
I think it's, I think it's totally defined. You know, we may move some pieces around a little bit, but that's consistent with the entire budget. We estimate that this is going to be the budget, but some of these line items get shuffled around throughout the year in any budget. Um, depending on the needs of the town or the school. So this is what we believe now, but we're six months away from the start of this budget. And things can change between now and then and do.
So i- in, in, in your reduction, you, you proposed dropping it from eighty thousand in one point to sixty. How would you then break the sixty up? Would the thirty change and you'd reduce? You know, what, what, how does that?
And I'd really like to, like, I think allocating the sixty thousand dollar number would get the job done. This is the current breakout on the chart here. And we may. At the fire department committee decide to shift some of this money around a little bit and put some more into the firefighter. Uh, response based stipend formula. So I think under the thirty thousand allocates, I think. Twenty thousand, let me just pull that back up here.
Yes, option ten is sixty thousand.
Twenty two thousand five hundred.
That's different.
That's not pulling up correctly.
Option five, twenty two five. That what you were trying to get to, the?
Yeah, it's option five, twenty two thousand five hundred.
That's what would happen if you dropped it to sixty.
And, and we may, like I said, add some more. Into that pot and then reduce. The officer stipends. But I'd like to do that. I'd like to have that discussion with the fire department committee before. Structure. I don't think we need to do that in stone here.
That's something that you could bring. After, before you, right?
Yeah.
That can happen, not the budget, right? Budget is really. And, and sort of codifying the change in operation.
Yep.
Okay.
Hey, I apologize if I'm squinting or looking at you funny, anybody that, I have a problem in my right eye right now, so. Yeah, I have a corneal, corneal abrasion in my right eye. So if I'm closing my eye, it's not because I'm. Signaling any kind of frustration or anything.
I told you to be nice, didn't Natalia?
Yeah, she, she whacked me pretty good this time.
Josh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, go ahead.
So there's a lot to this puzzle. Um, and obviously both fire departments, we've been playing this puzzle for sixty plus years. I'm going to say I am completely a hundred percent against affecting the highway budget. We have two departments that have butted heads for sixty years. We are now finally starting to turn that. And I don't want to take and try to get our department where we want to be. But then have it affect another department that we work very closely with. Um, and obviously these one and two percent definitely affects the highway budget tremendously. Um, so I, I'm not looking to do that. We go back and forth of having it be in the budget and on a special article. Structure of this, currently we have twelve officers, six on Ascotney, six, six on us. Line officers position. Stipends, as we talked about, each chief gets twenty two hundred dollars roughly. And that's only been within the last probably seven years. That the chiefs started out with a small stipend and has grown to the whopping twenty two hundred. So. The task force, we, we came up with looking at one department, how the structure would, would function. Um, and roughly we're going from twelve officers down to seven. Okay. And the, the duties for, uh, all these positions, yes. We're going from a volunteer organization to a municipal department. Those jobs descriptions, we have none of within our town. We have to create those. We have five years ago, we have the article that was passed to create municipal department. That's just been. Italy, just idling, sitting there for the last five years. Nothing else has been done with it. Nothing else has been talked about it. Um, so. Obviously passing of chief's following. With that happening, with, with his passing. It had took a tremendous blow to Ascotney Fire Department. Um, and this, they, they are obviously, we, we are there, we have. Picked up to try to help that void, um, to make sure that the town is properly covered throughout the whole town. Don't matter what side of town you have been on. Uh, we have. Done that, okay? We've made since April. The fires, fire departments, both fire departments have come a long ways, just in a short period of time. We're not looking and, and with this happening, obviously, um, Ascotney Fire has to. And they have, they've realized that they're at a critical turning point within their organization. Um, and it's, it was difficult for them to continue, especially on the response part of it. Of answering the calls during the day. So that's, hence why, um, the discussion of a municipal department combined in both came back. Um, obviously the task force, uh, was created, both departments are operating in this task force. The numbers, yes, the numbers can get turned around and when. Month and a half ago, when Brandon posed a twenty thousand. So realistically, as we talked last meeting, twenty thousand, as we break that out. We're, we're literally talking cents to all the members on responding to nearly six hundred calls, right? Pennies. We have seven positions and roughly between thirty to probably thirty five. Firefighters combining with the two stations. So that number is, it is going to fluctuate, just like personnel on the highway. Some people are coming, some people are going and. It's not going to be a fixed number. For the fire service to have a roster of thirty, thirty five. With, we get half of that roster that's dedicated, motivated, willing to serve our community. That, that we're, we're covering half the battle right now with, with the volunteering. That is nationwide that we're in a shortage. So this is really why, um, you know. Us as chief officers from both departments have talked. We presented this to the committee because we, we do see how much the fire service asks from. Our residents that choose to protect us. And we have been doing this for many, many years. Uh, other than the operation side of it, that the town is covering. Brandon, can you scroll up for a second, please? Yep. So I know there was last meeting, there was, um, there was a comment of. Fixed income versus, uh, fixed income, uh, residents versus people that have a very good income. So on average, two hundred and twelve thousand nine nine dollars is average appraisal, right? Some are, for example, trailer park. The fixed income area, right? Appraisals for those residents in there are probably not going to be two hundred and twelve thousand. But when you do break that down on the eighty thousand dollar thirty two. So on two hundred and twelve thousand, now we're going to break it down. And this is where. I did kind of change my tune of maybe it is best that we do bring this as a special article. So we can present to the taxpayers because it is putting the board at a critical point of. How much taxes do we as a board? They can put on the warrant for residents to take a vote on versus asking the residents. Us, fire department, please help us. With this expense. So realistically. So now we're double that to four hundred and twenty five thousand dollar property. Asking people forty cents a day to help cover the stipend for eighty thousand. Or we cut that in half. Now we're a top, we're asking residents that are fixed income, can you? Put aside ten to twelve cents a day to help the responding people that serve this town. When they need help. So. I guess when we have that dialogue with the taxpayers or with the residents and. Explain this more so than just seeing our department's asking for an ex- extra eighty thousand dollars. And your tax rate is going from seven to eleven percent. And it is a big jump. The only. Concern I have with reducing. The amounts to eighty to twenty is that. We're here now with no other special articles, with no other requests. We don't know where the school board's coming in. And I've, we've been on in this town long enough that what happens next year, when there's other requests. When we're going to come back to say, hey, we didn't fully fund this to eighty thousand. And we need to put another forty thousand in. So we're going to go through this discussion again. So that is really why, yes, Brandon threw in twenty thousand to begin with, right at the beginning. Met as a task force, budget committee met and come to realize that. Twenty thousand is not doing nothing to take in, help, support. Our members, our firefighters for the town of Weathersfield. And I, I don't want it to be a slap in the face because none of us are taking it as a slap in the face. We've been doing this. For many years now, we're looking to have a structure, a townwide structure change. Help provide a better service. That, that's the key right here. What, why we're doing this is to make. A, a department that is going to be better for the town. To help our members that are currently on and or people that are interested of, hey. You're going to join our department, you're going to have fun doing it. But we are going to ask you for. Forty hours in training. That you have to do. Well, plus we're really, because I'm expecting every member that's available anytime. If we have a call, they get their butt up out of bed. And come to the call. And. Not everybody likes to do that. Not everybody wants to get up when it's how cold out. And I think it's, so far from January first. Our fire departments have been very busy in just a short, two week period. And we have another fifty weeks just in this year. So really, this request is to. Only try to give back a little bit that we have been doing for a long period. And, and I don't want to, I don't want to see, I don't want to see us moving forward and making improvements. But it take us another ten years to get there. And I think that's kind of where the budget committee, um, came up with, you know, twenty thousand, it's going to take us how long to get where? It's really. At the end of the year, it's not pennies, but it's dollars for our members that are, that are doing this job to say thank you. Um, and that's the biggest thing. I'm going to shut up and that's all I have.
There, the number they, they come out with eighty thousand at the budget committee, I said, I didn't know if they really had put enough number in there. I thought it should have been higher, but that's my thought. Um, some numbers I can give you is if we just went on, I believe there's twenty four scheduled meetings for select board, am I correct? So at twenty four meetings, if you take your five hundred dollars, it comes out to twenty dollars and eighty three cents to show up here for the five of you. If the five of you answered the five hundred and seventy one calls they did. Would have brought it to fifty nine thousand four hundred sixty nine sixty five. If you did the twenty four drills they do. At your twenty eighty three, would have brought you to fifty nine thousand nine hundred and sixty nine dollars and fifty five cents. We're at sixty, we didn't ask you to get up at two o'clock in the morning, go play with water at twenty below zero or ten below zero. It's like, uh. Their, their number is not crazy here. It's, it's, as I said the other night, uh, these men in women spending. Five hundred thousand dollars to outfit their vehicles for, you know, safety apparatus to go to a call, when we call them. They're probably, I, I had a guesstimate, I'm, think I'm somewhere in the, in the ballpark, they're losing about fifteen hundred hours. Of administrative fees. Who's paying that? It's like, you know, we say, I said, what the select board has for their stipend. But on top of that, Brandon's getting paid. The, uh, office people are getting paid to do the stuff for the select board, add that together. They worth less? As a safety personnel? I, I don't think so. I, I just, I don't see how we can, uh, not, whether it goes on a. Uh, article or not, uh, cutting this number down is. It's just, you're, you're crippling them. Uh, they, these people are, you know, trying to help us out. Uh, we've had free for so long, I think we just got accustomed to it. Budget's going up, everything's got up. It's, it's time to pay, you know, pay for what you want for services. If you don't want services, don't have services, but. Um, total with the eighty thousand dollars, I believe their budget's four hundred thousand nine hundred dollars, something like that. Uh, twenty eight hundred people here, I believe, thirty five hundred in Windsor. Their fire department, I believe is one, one point one eight million. I have a few more people, but not many, seven hundred people more. You know, even at four hundred thousand, we're getting a deal, but that's all I got. Unless you have any questions.
Um, hey, Mike, can I, can I just say this? I, I, I don't think we should be.
I, I, I don't think we should be, be convinced or not convinced by the budget committee. They're a separate entity that any other year they're active and they get to.
Speaking as a resident though.
But even so, there's been lots of references here to the budget committee. Um, and in the past, they have their, when the article is read, they have their opinion, which I think should. Either reinforce or not, whatever the board chooses to do, so I'm not. Uh, you know, it is important for the budget committee to act separately. And this board to just get the same information. Um, that's all, I just, um, there's been a lot of reference to it. Um.
I'm not on the budget committee. I agree with his numbers. Um, I've heard all about this fire department thing, obviously through my husband.
Could you identify? Please identify yourself.
Christina Sharest.
Yeah, I, I know, but you need to.
Sorry, I don't like to speak, um. I'm in agreeance with these numbers. These firefighters are leaving their jobs. Go save our homes, save our families, save whatever, and they're leaving their. I don't know, sixteen-hour, twenty-five-hour, thirty-dollar-an-hour jobs. To go do this, yes, I know it's volunteer, but they should get some sort of reimbursement. And I'm just, I'm just adding to what he said. But I'm just saying, as a resident, not as a budget committee member. And there's other people out there that are residents that feel the same way, who are not on the budget committee.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a question of the board. I think. Yep, over here, where am I? Where'd you go? Right there. So currently, we, we are under consideration of option two, three, and four. Four being the one option that sends the. Fire department stipends to the voters for their decision. So I want to ask the board. Where, if you, if you look at option four and you take out the fire department stipends, where are you on that budget?
Say that in a different way.
Option, option four, how, option four. That budget does not include the fire department stipends.
Correct.
How do you feel about that budget? It, do you want to see a one percent decrease, two percent decrease, no decrease? Um, you want to see an increase?
So option four is asking for a twelve percent increase in property taxes, is that correct?
No.
Uh, option four is at six percent.
So. Is that with the reductions that you proposed before? Because my sheet doesn't say that.
No. Option four is the budget. As proposed, the only thing not in option four is the fire department stipends, eighty thousand dollars for the.
Do we have, do we have a sheet that I can follow where it's not this big one anymore?
Yeah, yeah, that's it. That should be it.
That is the sheet, Dave, but that's not the tax rate calculation. So I gave you guys those separately, um, in a packet, and they're also up here on the, on the screen.
That come today?
No.
No, came at the last meeting.
I'm just trying to follow.
That's, no, that's fine, Dave. You're all right. So.
So regardless, keeping it at eighty, we're still looking at this.
I want you to take the eighty out of it and just focus on the budget.
Sure, but the overall tax rate, assuming. Pass it, right, which is. Um, we're still looking. Thirteen percent increase in the municipal taxes we raise, is that wrong?
Yeah, that's wrong.
What would be the increase in municipal taxes to be raised?
Uh, seven point five five percent.
That would be if both articles pass.
Yes. It, both articles, you mean the fire department stipends and the general fund budget?
And highway.
And the highway, yes.
This, 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 this discussion is all well and good, but you're getting ahead of me. I want to know where you're at on just the budget without the fire department stipends at all. To start with, are you okay with the presentation of the budget without fire department stipends? Narrow focus.
To be honest, I wouldn't mind hearing from Ray, I'm not excited about impacting the highway.
I have no, there's, no, that's not a decrease on highway.
You're talking about just the general fund portion. Of option four.
Yes, well, uh, actually, the calculation sheet that you gave us is, is a combined, shows them both, right?
Yeah, so under, and Nate's actually right, which I know you're trying to separate it, Mike, but if all articles passed. Without a reduction budget. Taxes would increase by seven point five five percent. That's including the eighty thousand. Without the fire department stipends and including all articles, it would be six point zero nine percent. So you're essentially adding like one point five percent. By adding.
Option three.
Under option three?
It shows me thousand on the chart.
Um, so that is the top side summary. So you'd have to actually go into the fire department budget, which is, uh. Which is right here. And then you look under option four, which is this yellow here. Um, uh, excuse me, option three, and that's where the eighty thousand is.
The part I don't like about, if you look at option four in its totality is right as I, um. I guess the part that I question in the funding, my option four is, is adding the two extra special articles. Right, which is around the highway capital. And highway equipment.
Is that correct, Brandon?
If I'm reading option four, number three would be assuming two, would be actually assuming three.
That is actually, that, that's correct.
Yes.
Did I get it wrong on the tax rate calculation? Let me take a peek here. Let's verify that in the budget. Yep, that's correct. I did forget to add in the two special articles for the highway department under option four. Catch.
Which puts you at eight and a half?
It depends, because option four only uses fifty-two thousand, five hundred in fund balance, so we could. We could use more fund balance and just transfer that to reserves under option four, um. Which is, which was our funding mechanism for option three, so we could stop the special articles by adding. Another fifty thousand to the fund balance used in op- option four.
Meaning taking the fund balance and putting it in there.
Yes, which is consistent with prac- past practice, um. The only difference is by adding it into the budget, it's cleaner, so the voters. Bolt that into the budget and we don't run a deficit at the end of the year. Because if, when the select board transfers a fund balance to reserves, it overspends the budget. But you don't have the same amount of revenue coming in. See what I'm saying?
I, I hear you, I don't think of it like that, but I understand and.
Yeah.
Right, you're basically taking a fund balance, you're putting it in a reserve account, and then you're using it to buy fire apparatus or whatever, then, or highway apparatus the next year, right?
Yep.
So you're not, so it's not actually a deficit, but I understand.
It looks like that on our books, our treasurer doesn't like it.
He doesn't like deficit. And. If we're using the fund balance put into a reserve account, the tax rate goes up, right?
No.
So I guess I don't understand where, where that fund balance is being spent.
So the fifty thousand under option four, you would add fifty thousand to that fifty-two thousand, five hundred. So you'd bet, you'd be at a hundred and two thousand, five hundred, and then you'd expend fifty thousand, twenty-five thousand into each reserve. It would tra- it wouldn't spend it, but it would transfer it into reserves where it would live until it's needed.
Right, and so if we don't transfer it into the reserve, what's happening with it in?
Just, it just stays in fund balance. Yep.
No, it stays in the operation account. It stays live in the.
When the auditors do the, the audit, they lock it and restrict it in highway fund balance.
It's not transferred, it's in the annual operating.
Yeah, it stays in, it stays in the, the fund balance line item.
It's already collected tax revenue.
Yep.
It's cash.
No, that makes sense, and it's restricted to highway use, which is similar, right? Which is similar to putting in a reserve fund.
I thought we were only talking about general fund.
Well, we're not if we're talking about the tax calculation sheet, because that's combined. You're talking about the overall implication on the tax bill.
So I think it's important to know what the year and twenty-four fund balances were to put that in context. With the general fund and the highway.
Hundred and thirty and sixty-two, right?
I don't know.
Yeah, I believe it's a hundred and thirty and sixty-two thousand, five hundred. I'd have to double check that, though.
That's what you said last week.
Yep.
So that's what's important to know, so that you're talking about what you're, what you're using as a fund balance to offset the twenty-six tax rate. But still remaining, so if you only use them fifty on, uh, on the one thirty, then you've got eighty rolling around still in the, as a cash. It's not transferred into reserve.
Why would you not transfer that? In what situation would you not want that transferred into the reserve account?
Yep, and that's a really good question, um. So do you see option one, how it would be a total tax impact of, or just in the general fund of twenty percent? And then the highway fund of six percent? Um, what we would do is we would apply that gradually over a couple of years, so that we don't have a spike in the tax rate.
If you leave it as a fund balance.
Correct.
And is there a stipulation that you have to use it in a certain amount of time?
No.
There used to be, but I guess the rules have changed, like the highway did say you shall use it in the subsequent year.
That has changed.
That has changed. So. A- as we're winding up all these talking, though, it is important to remember, and I pointed this out already, that, um. For instance, if you stay on the, on the, um, topic of fire. Um, the fire a- apparatus acqui- acquisition fund, right now the reserve account has one hundred and thirty thousand dollars in it. That's not really a lot of money. Trucks are approaching five hundred thousand for a pump. So when you say, um. What are you gonna do with the reserves or whatever else is going on? We're, we're gonna be taking a bite. Or something's gonna happen, break, or look for lease return things or something, because that's what's gonna happen. But the dump trucks are no different in the highway, you take a look at what's in the accounts. And, uh. Or there's gonna be a really big, long extension in the debt schedule, gonna be borrowing the money.
Brandon, what is your recommendation on this budget?
Um, like as far as which option? Or?
Yes. Option dollars? Reserves?
It would be, I, I believe I said this in the last meeting, it would be option three. But I still, I do see the. I did, I, I, I do see the reason or the justification for a special article. And letting the voters decide because it is a change of business, um. I'm just not, which this is a. You're adding a lot, you're adding potentially thirty people to payroll, um. I mean, we've changed business before and it didn't go out to a special article, um. At the school, when you guys change, like, business, does it go to a special article? This would be my question.
Well, I'm not sure, well, yeah, you sold a building or you brought on a building. Like I'm trying to, to equate that to a, to a similar.
Yep.
Situation, right?
Like if you changed, like if you had, like, foreign languages, for example, and then you changed that to, I think we were talking about that. Um, like an IT department, would that be it? I mean, that's a change of business, would that be a special article? Because in, in Weathersfield, we've changed business before, um, when we contracted out to an assessor. Um, when we changed the course of business from a employee land use administrator to a contracted land use administrator, then back to an employee. So there's been many changes of the course, in fact, this budget changes the course of business in many other ways, other than the fire departments, um.
I guess, I guess my thinking goes back to, right, it was originally brought to the voters as a dialogue, right? I think this model is. Better, right, I do, I mean, I think this is, is a very different conversation with the voters, but you've already brought it to the voters once, right? Voters made a decision. Um, and, and right, my, right, there is a lot of thought behind how people voted. Um, and there was a dialogue at town meeting, sometimes it was uncomfortable, um. But I, and I think you've already brought it to once. I don't think it would be right to bring the same conversation, assume that, uh, without bringing it back to the, right?
Yep.
The voters about, uh, this, which I do think is a fundamental change.
And I think it's a totally different conversation, too, that you're.
I do think it, right, it, th- this model is very different than when, when chief had a lot of, like, had a big dollar amount, right? This is a different model. Um, and I'll be honest, I would be having a very different conversation if we were talking about expenses, right? Uh, versus, uh, stipends, uh, uh, um. And I, and I get you guys already had that conversation.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's, I, I see as different reimbursement over expenses versus looking at stipends and, and, and sort of moving this direction. I'm not sure, so, argument of the dollar amount, right?
And, and, and I think in option three, like, we would still have that dialogue at town meeting, um. Because it would be in the presentation, and I'm not advocating for not putting it on a special article either. Because I think that both, both ways would get the job done at, as far as discussion goes for a town meeting. Um, I just think that. Based on previous, um. Ways of looking at special articles for these purposes. Signif- sig- gives the wrong message to the public that maybe the select board does not support the fire department stipends when they.
We will make sure that's not the message coming from this board if we choose to do that. Budget committee will be speaking. Fire departments will be speaking if it goes to a special article.
Yep.
Um.
Guess the question I would ask is, do we, do we think that a budget with us, you know, seven and a half? Which I think is what percent increase at this point. Pass, the voters would pass it, that would be a responsible budget to ask the voters, right? That would be the question I would ask us next, well, I mean, Brandon's already presented us with, like, hey, if we don't think this is responsible, it's gonna pass. Right? What it might look like if we had to reduce it, but I think that would be the next question that, you know, I would. Be curious. What, see what other people on the board thought.
Right. So where are we at? What do you want to do?
What was the rate increase last year?
Take a peek.
Just under four, wasn't it? Or was it just under three, just under three, two-seven, something like that?
I, I can't remember where we ended up.
In cents, it was two point seven cents. You, you keep switching between percentages and cents, and they're not the same.
Keep asking about just the general.
Yeah.
No, no, the overall tax increase last year, I think was, it, it ended up, it was, it was closer to three, but I think there was other money that came in from the state and it dropped it to like 2.7 by the time we got to the tax rate.
It was a 1.8% increase. The year before that it was a 12.9. And, and I think the reason why it came in less, Mike, is because the grant list increased.
Yeah.
So.
Again, yeah, that's.
And this assumes no increase in the grant list.
Uh, this assumes that. That we, we could be one, one and a half percent. It could be. The CLA could go down and we could get whacked pretty good from, from some of those other taxes that we receive again too, because we're not done with that process yet. Um, um, I do, I, I agree with Dave. I do not want to, and I, I don't know if you addressed this yet, Nate, I think you did. Um, I don't want to, uh, hit the other departments, um, for this. Um, I know that the budgets that the town manager is putting together are what are generally referred to as bare bones budgets. Um, we're operating pretty thin. We, the, the highway department can't afford to lose a man. That's, that's my, my opinion. I think Dave's already said that. Um, that, that won't work. Uh, one way to look at that is, uh, if you have a big snowstorm, you've got two guys that are sick, you've got three guys left to run trucks. That ain't going to work. You're going to have all kinds of problems and that's just one easy example you can point out. I also think, I, I, I did a survey that, uh, years ago, John, you kept referencing this when it was time to, when you went to the municipal department. Uh, I did a survey and, and the people in the town unanimously, or not unanimously, but overwhelmingly, um, wanted quote, one fire department. That's all it was. It didn't say municipal, didn't say this or that, just said, do you want one unified fire department? That was the question. And, and, and the people said yes to that. And that was used to create the municipal department, uh, before us. I don't think we've ever been any closer, at least as long as I've been around. Dave, you could probably attest to this to, to.
I'm old.
To, I know.
That's too older.
But I don't think we've ever been any closer to resolving the, the many years of conflict that have existed between these two departments as we are right now. And I'd hate to see us start going backwards. That's.
I don't think we're going to go backwards, Mike.
I, I don't think you can, I don't think either one of us can predict that, Dave.
No, I can.
Don't know. I don't.
We're not going back. We're not going back.
I, well, I don't think you can. Well, unless you're going to make a motion to, you know, do something.
Don't tempt me.
Um, well, I personally, right now, I don't want to do anything to, to cut other services. I think the budgets are, are already as thin as they need to be. I don't think a one or a 2% is any benefit in this case. Um, number two, I think the greatest level of transparency is putting the article before the voters and letting the voters have their voice. I think that is the highest level of transparency in a budget and it's up to us to present that budget and, and tell them why it is what it is. It's also in the end, um, if we get the results, I would like to see, uh, it also, uh, is an affirmation for those fire departments for all of their hard work and, uh, what they do for this town, uh, which, which I think most people recognize and I, I don't see, I personally don't see this failing. I, I was trying to get through the budget part without the fire department thing, but you guys kind of resisted that. So I'm going to jump right ahead and I'm going to ask for a motion for article number four. Do I hear a motion to accept article number four or, or, or option number four, which is the budget with a, with two articles? Right?
Well, depends on if you want to add fund balance to it now, Mike, because Nate bought an error that I had made.
Okay. You need to correct that. So we know what that is.
It's, it can be easily fixed right now by adding 50,000 and highway fund balance to option four.
And where is that added? On the revenue side?
On the revenue side. Yep.
And that reduces the tax rate.
No, it puts money in the reserve.
It just, all it does is just.
Puts money in a reserve account. Okay. So it's not, it's not being applied to the tax rate. It's just putting it in a reserve account.
Yep.
And that, and that reserve account is for fire acquisition?
Highway capital reserves and highway equipment reserves.
Okay. So it's not fire at all. It's highway. Good. Okay.
Now, what it, what it also does is it adds 50,000 to revenues and 50,000 to expenses on the highway fund budget, but it's non-tax. I mean, it's, it's already.
It's a reimbursable expense. It's a, it's a one in, one out.
It does that because you're adding 50,000 in fund balance. So on the total revenue for the highway department, and then you're adding that 50,000 back in to reserves. So it's increasing your expenses, but it's not, it's not impacting tax revenue at the same time.
If, if you brought it in and just used it to offset the tax rate.
Well, what isn't that one line two in our option four does though, uses 30 and 30,000 in general fund balance and 52 in the highway fund balance. Is that my understanding of, right? If I was looking at.
What, what option's that? Three?
No, it's under option four, but line two. Right? Uses 30, 30,000 in the general fund balance of 52,000 in the highway fund balance. My assumption was that was buying down the tax rate.
It is.
Yeah. And that, that's the part I'm worried about. I say, um, uh.
Um, and why are you worried about that?
Well, I'm worried about perpetuating. What I, I mean, what I would have to hear is like, what is that relative? The last couple of years as far as how does that actually stabilize our tax rate versus increase, right? Create a bigger problem next year.
What did we use for, uh, fund balances last year to reduce the tax rate, Brendan?
So we used 40,000 in the fire department budget and the proposed use is, is reducing that to 20,000. And then let me just confirm that is correct in this case. Yeah. So last year we used 40, reducing it to 20. So it is steadily decreasing the use of fund balance. And so it does do that there. Let me just confirm that it does it on the administration side. On the administration side. Sorry. It's hard to see. Uh, oh, okay. We're decreasing it from 40,000 to 10,000.
This says 30.
Yeah. Total combined general fund balance is 30.
And he's on the, he's on the budget sheet.
So that's actually pretty healthy.
Right?
It's reducing.
I'm quite clarifying, a little confused. Um, we're talking about the general fund, right? Only?
Not when you're looking at option four.
You're trying to adopt, you're trying to vote to approve a combined budget? But you've only been discussing one budget so far. So a little.
Ray, 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 we're going to have to break it up a little bit right now. It's just a matter of, of looking at, at a proposed option four as the overall direction to go. We're, we're still going to have to come out of there after, if we say, okay, we're going to, we accept option four, we're still going to have to back up and look at the numbers from Brandon corrected. For the general fund and for the highway fund and vote on those separately.
Okay. So you're not trying to vote on both funds right now?
No, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to nail down the option. It's okay.
The highway fund is untouched. Not getting by my vote.
That's, that's correct. That's correct. Not touching the highway. No.
So I'm not touching any of them. See.
So I can make the motion.
Yes.
Right? Cause we're talking about the concept of option four.
Yes.
I can make that, that motion to proceed on, on option four.
Do I hear?
Exactly how to word that, but.
That's what, do I hear a second to the motion? Uh, the motion is to proceed with option number four as the, the guideline for the fiscal year 26, general fund and highway fund budgets to be approved at the next meeting. Is that? That work? Do I hear a second to that motion? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the option choice?
Yes. I want to be crystal clear about the use of the $130,000 FY24 general fund surplus and the $60,000 highway fund FY24.
Get the way around 60 in the general fund, one 30 in the highway.
It's the other way around?
Yeah.
Oh, I, okay. I wrote that down differently. So, so what are the uses going to be in either a transfer? Well, not a transfer. What are the amounts to be used to reduce the tax rate in that option for those numbers?
And, and what's going to be left behind as well?
Correct. Yes. Big, it's a big deal.
Yes.
Well, so based on this conversation, we're using 30 in the general fund and we have 32 left in the.
Well, in the, in this option, he's still going to have the option to, to, to come forward with some numbers and present us, you know, some, some slight variations there or, or clarifications there. Correct, Brandon?
Yep.
So, you know, but, but the general focus is to go with the option of four, gives you a general idea where we're headed. And he'll, he'll have these, and Dave has requested, you know, what, and that's a good question, Dave. What are we doing with the fund balances? What's going to be left behind? You know, we put, how much is going into what reserve where, what are we using? What are we not using? Is, what's being used to reduce taxes? What, et cetera? There, there's multiple uses there. So.
What if this, so under the current thing that we've got a highlight in yellow, if you remain, leave those alone, and I'm not saying to leave them in the annual accounts. It, without using the fund surpluses as part of the budgets, is it 6.09? Is, and you highlighted in yellow, it's on this page here, the separate option four page.
7.55.
No, I see.
Does it use any of the surpluses in the highway or general fund?
Yes. Yes, it does. Right, Brandon? Uh, I think you said 20 and 40.
So option four, um, it uses 102,000, 102,500 in highway fund balance, leaving that fund balance with 27,500, but 50,000 goes into reserves.
Of that 102.5.
Yep. So 52.5 is buying down the tax rate for that department.
Hey, which seat are you looking at? Like this one?
I'm not looking at it.
He's not, he's, he's, he's.
I think I'm looking at the FY26 budget options with a date of January 2nd, 2025. It's this sheet.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Under option four.
Okay. I got you. It says on, uh, uh, number two, uses 30,000 in the general fund balance and 52.5.
However, instead of doing the two special articles under four, Nate, I believe when he made his motion withdrew that and then added 50,000 to the use of fund balance and transferred 50,000 to highway department reserve accounts.
Gotcha. So that leaves a, an imbalance of approximately, which I agree with, 30,000 in the annual operating budget line item for highway.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes. Right?
Yes.
That surplus of 130, just use a hundred, split it up and to put in reserves and to pay the fund, which is what I said really a lot earlier, mixing it up.
I'm slow.
That's correct. So it gets transferred.
So 30 under number two, you've left. So you've kept 30 in the general fund.
Is that correct?
Yep.
Yep. 30. Yeah.
Okay.
Used half of the, half of the 60 and kept 30 there. So, so, and, and remember we, we aren't required by law to keep them separate now. So that does leave us with almost $60,000 in fund balance.
Yeah. Like, I like all these laws, but when we vote on them as voters, we're voting separately on the ballot box.
Yes. Yep. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion?
Can I hear it again?
Oh.
Well, it has to say, so don't we really have to nail down the amount to be raised by taxes? I mean, that's really.
Well, yes and no, Dave, because this, I, I declared, I, I, I made this clear that we're really just voting on the option that we're going to apply. We're still going to come back and individually vote on the general fund and the highway fund after this. It, it, correct, Brandon? You're going to, you've got some numbers to fix and.
So I will with, I will remove the other four options and then I'll show the five year budget history with option four as the budget that's being presented. And in that, the town meeting articles, it'll have the amount to be raised by taxes. So you'll get two different, two different things at the next meeting.
That should, that should close up the budget. Should be done. Okay. So we're not really finalizing the budget tonight. We're just finalizing the idea that we're going to use for it.
Right. But we should sort of get to a point where Brandon knows what numbers to build it off, right? Cause if.
I, I think he does.
Can't you find those though? When you look at this sheet right here and it does.
You guys could do this tonight and I could tell you the numbers right now. If you just want to get it done.
Say though, on option four, it says, you know, for instance, in the general fund, it says, shall the voters, um, authorize $1,890,527 of which $1,503,458 is to be raised for taxes. Is that easy? If that's option four.
That's the motion for option four.
I didn't make that yet. I'm just saying.
Are you moving that?
Yeah. I'm just.
Well, we're not there yet. We, and we, and we already have a motion on the floor, so we can't quite get there yet.
That's it.
Um.
But what good is the motion?
I, 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 I see what you're saying, Dave. So, so, so you want to nail down the, or did you just do that in your discussion? Did you nail, are you happy with those numbers?
I didn't make the, I didn't make the other motion just to say I'm going to pick option four, but those, that's what you have to do. You have to say the dollar amount with the amount to be raised for taxes.
Okay. Brandon, what's that number?
Uh.
I'm not on that page.
For the general fund, the number is 1,503,458 to be raised by taxes.
No change?
Uh, no change. No. Um.
Okay.
With.
Does that dollar amount um, reflect the use of the FY24 fund balance?
Yes. Now the highway fund, when we get there, it's going to be slightly different than what you see. But the amount of taxes being raised isn't going to change.
See, this is why I wanted to vote on that option four and then come back and do this.
I think you're right.
Budget separate.
I'm confused already by the, I'm, I, I'm agreeing with you.
So, so we just agree on, so, so we do have a, a motion to, uh, move forward with option four and that's been seconded. You have clear, uh, understanding of what Nate's, uh, request was regarding the reserve accounts and the, and the fund ballots.
Yep.
The use of fund balance, right? Reserve and into the reserve account. Okay. So you understand that. So that's the current motion on the floor, which is to go with option four. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Option four is the choice for the budget.
I have a question for, for the board. Do we need to have a special meeting in order to do option four? Well, because the next meeting is on January 27th. They could run upstairs and just create the town meeting morning and probably.
But don't, so right, option four is the concept. What I thought you said right before this is now we are going to go general fund, approve the, approve the actual.
The general fund and the highway fund.
Highway and we'll have to get the language for the, the fire article, right?
Can we do all that right now?
Which means he would need a motion for the amount.
Yes.
For each of those.
That's correct. That is correct. And, and the motion is X, uh, support the budget of X number of dollars, X number of dollars to be raised by taxes. And.
The only thing up in the air is whether or not it's accurate about the fund balance, um, use for the general fund, but actually for each of the separate arguments. So that's the only thing up in the air.
Um, I, I know from my experience with Brandon, I'm pretty confident that he knows what those numbers are and what's there, what he's used and what he has not used. So as long as he gets that together so that we have understanding of that together as a, as a group. You probably, you probably will, but that's not my fault. That, that'll be his fault.
That's what I'm trying to stop is a special.
But his running lights ain't working.
Last two years in a row.
Last minute.
He's not going to be able to figure this out in Braille.
Almost there. I got maybe another.
Brandon is, is a wizard when it comes to these spreadsheets. I know, but he's had trouble with his eyes.
I guess the, the, the question that I didn't hear answered is I'm still, would love to hear if the board's feeling confident that this percent increase will pass, right? And I think that will drive what we agreed to for Brandon at the article. But right, if people are, as long as people are comfortable with this, then it's easy to have that conversation, but. Then it's easy to have that conversation, but if people aren't comfortable with this percent increase. And that, this is going to be a longer conversation because we're going to have to go.
The, 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 the conversation tends to turn more towards how much are my taxes going up? Am I right, Dave?
Yeah, but I'll tell you this. So I've heard a lot of this about like a dollar forty one or whatever the comparisons are. I worry about the eight hundred, eight thousand nine hundred and forty two dollars that I have to pay already. I don't worry about the last one hundred and fourteen. Because there's always a question about everybody about what, what is going on with what you're doing. You know, it's, I laugh inside. When I heard about what people do or they don't do, if only this room were filled with farmers, they would be laughing. Because, you know. I've been used to that comment forever for working for free.
How long do you need?
What affects me is the total of it and I worry about the first. My tax bill, you know, and, and, and you have to pay it in total and we are all one. And sometimes. These meetings get bogged down with. Everybody that comes in here separately. And everybody's important, of course they are. Um. So I don't know.
Is, is there a, uh, budget comparison in here that I'd be able to look at to see last year's? Brandon, as I go into the presentation here?
He gave you a, he gave you a, there's a sheet.
Dave, hang on a second.
If this is ten year history.
Oh, you mean the town meeting warning?
No, no, just, just, uh, uh, just last year's numbers for the budget, last year's budget numbers, twenty five fiscal year twenty five. Just right, right there?
Yeah, no, it's last year's.
Okay, right there. That's what I want. That's all I need. Um, so for discussion, general fund, uh, proposed this year for fiscal year twenty six. Is one million eight hundred ninety thousand. Five hundred twenty seven dollars. In reference. Last year. Uh, general fund. Total. Uh, one million seven hundred seventy four thousand nine hundred and twenty four dollars. That's an increase of almost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the general fund budget. Correct?
Yep.
All right. Um, of which, one million five hundred three. Thousand four hundred and fifty eight dollars. Is to be raised by taxes. And is that number here also tax revenue? Uh, general fund expenses. Shh, I don't see, I don't have that tax number here though, do I? Tax revenue.
Under option four, it shows the change at one hundred and fifty six thousand twelve dollars.
Yes. Thank you. One hundred fifty six thousand dollars. So that's the general fund budget that we're talking about. Um. And Dave, you, you were talking about fund balances?
Yeah.
Relative to the general fund. What's going on with those? What is that total and where are they going?
Uh. Ten thousand, uh, thirty thousand to offset property. Taxes. And thirty two thousand to remain in fund balance.
Hasn't to offset what?
Taxes.
Taxes. Will you donate the thirty two thousand?
Uh.
Receding it as a fund balance.
Yeah, holding it in fund balance. Which is similar to what we've, we've always held thirty to fifty thousand, um. In the general fund and highway fund budgets.
That can that money only be used for certain things? Can that money only be used for fund balance in the future?
No. It could be used for anything in a general fund.
So a fund balance balances your general fund. Um. So if, if you end up landing. Um, in the general fund with greater expenses than you anticipated, it would balance the general fund. So it's like a contingency. Um.
Oh, flush pocket, they're giving you.
But if you look at Pat, the past practice over the past five years that I've managed the budgets. I've always come in. Under budget, um. So I don't typically overspend. But like Dave was saying. We are fully staffed. Um.
And there are things that can happen throughout the year that you, you cannot project. A, a, a family on. Uh, let's say the opt out program with our insurance. Um, because a spouse has, uh. Uh, provided that family with health insurance. That could change and all of a sudden we have to provide a full healthcare package. That's a huge, that's going to be a huge hit to the town budget. Uh, so, so you do need to. Keep a, a cushion. Uh, there. Now, we do have one. I mean, if that happened, we could go, we, we could pull it from the rainy day fund if we had to.
Yep.
So that we don't end up in, in a, in a deficit. Uh, situation at the end of the year, but.
Can't that money to bring?
We, we can. We, we can, but, but, but if you move it in there, then it takes a vote of the board to move it back out. So you generally tend to let the, the, the manager run the town. And, and you do it on the following year. If you still have more left over the following year, then go ahead and put it in there. Cause I, I think, weren't we up to ten percent on that, John, right? Uh, of the general fund, and I know we're shy on that now. That, and, and that hasn't been happening. But, but I, I don't believe that's been happening.
One fourteen.
One fourteen.
The cap is a hundred and eighty nine thousand, it's not there.
Yeah, exactly. So, so at the end of the year, again, if he ends up, it, it, either, either you're going to use the surplus and influx it into the next budget. Yeah. You're either going to influx it into the next budget or, or you could put it into that account. You could, or you can put it into a different account, which is what we've been doing. We've been putting it into either equipment. Or, you know, something. We've been, we've been putting it into other reserve accounts.
Mike's a hundred percent right. It's only a percent and a quarter of the, of the total general fund budget and he needs to stay there, whatever that is, has to stay there.
Yeah.
Hundred percent.
Just let the town manager.
Now if it gets up like, you know, like seventy or a hundred thousand, well then you, you pull it back to thirty.
No, yeah.
At the end of the year.
Correct, yeah. Okay. So that is the general fund, um. Did, did you write the article? Is the, are the articles in here? We just needed the number for that, right?
Yeah, and you have the numbers there on that. On that sheet that I just wrote.
Yeah, but I gotta find it. I think I'm in last. Weeks. Think so. Forty minutes, budget option firefighter stipend. Perfect counts outstanding reappraisal. Tax rate calculations. So let me go look at that. Is it, is it in the packet for January fourteen, Brandon?
Yeah, it's on page three.
Got it. Okay. Three, four, um, we got to go through the whole thing, but let's get done with the article six. So article six would then read, shall the voters of the town of Weathersfield approve the expenditure of. One million eight hundred ninety thousand five hundred twenty seven dollars for the support and operation of the town's general fund. One million five hundred three dollars four hundred and fifty eight. One million five hundred and three thousand four hundred and fifty eight dollars shall be raised by property taxation, allowing the select board to set the appropriate tax rate. Do I hear a motion to accept that? That, uh, the, the general fund and that article? Yes, John. Mm-hmm.
Triple check your number. Sign it later. Sign the warrant later.
Oh.
It's really embarrassing.
Yeah. Just don't sign it. Go, go ahead and. Uh, i- i- if we vote on the specific set of numbers, can we change it? Uh.
So that, the numbers, I, I just want to verify the numbers right here. It's.
How, and, and we just got done saying we've done this the last two years in a row. We have to come back for a special meeting and change the numbers.
So my, my suggestion would be right now, the motion is accept the budget as proposed, the general fund budget as proposed.
Let's do that.
Brandon.
We already did that with option four. We, because the numbers aren't plugged in.
Yeah, so these numbers are. Right there, um. It's one million eight hundred and ninety thousand five hundred and twenty seven. Of which one million five hundred and three thousand four hundred and fifty eight. Is to be raised by taxes. Is that what you mean by double checking, John?
So I'm just thinking back one year, um. Crap, what, Trump ended. And, and, and I don't remember what I went to general. But it, it was, was the general fund. I think it wasn't fire department, but it was a little really awkward. Triple check that, you still could forget it. But nonetheless, one more.
The only question for me is, does one five zero three four five eight? Equal, which is the amount to be proposed to be raised by taxes, does that equal, uh, the application of the highway fund FY twenty four? Uh, thirty thousand dollar reduction. That's important because you want.
It's not the highway fund, Dave.
No, no, I know, general fund.
Yes, it does.
Only talking time.
Um, and, and you can see that here. Under use of fund balance, uh, which is. Option four, ten thousand. Yeah, sorry. Um, so under option four, you'll see ten thousand here. And then when you go to the fire department stipends. Out of fire department budget, um. You'll see twenty thousand and use of fund balance here.
Okay. Not, but, and I just want to clarify that, 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 that one five zero three is the correct number to be raised by taxes after that thirty thousand is applied. Well. Cause that's, that's looking like. Uh, well, when you look across, right, go, go across there, it's a twelve percent increase need in tax revenue. Even though it's only a seven percent increase in the total operational money. Which is a little strange. Right?
Um. Not really. So if you go to the tax rate calculation formula. Put it, I'll pull it up here. You go to option four. Um. This was the tax rate in FY twenty five, which was point seven two zero six. And then this is the tax rate in FY twenty six, which is point seven six four five. And all of these numbers here reflect the numbers that you're reading into the morning.
So this one's been updated beyond this one?
Correct.
Okay, good. That resolves my. Questions.
Yeah, so this is six point zero nine percent.
Updated.
Tax increase.
Okay.
Without. Special article.
Without the special article. Okay, so. Let's vote on the general fund. Budget first. To accept the general fund budget at one million eight hundred ninety thousand dollars, five hundred, eight hundred ninety, five hundred and twenty seven dollars. Um, that's just, that's the general fund operating budget. Do I hear a motion to accept that?
Don't move.
Do I hear a second? Motion has been made and seconded to accept one million eight hundred ninety thousand four hundred, five hundred and twenty seven dollars is the general fund budget fiscal year twenty six. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? There are none. So are we safe to assume that the highway is in the same condition? That we, the numbers you just gave me. Are the correct numbers and that we could just move with a motion to accept the highway fund at one million. Two hundred eighty three thousand five hundred forty one dollars.
That is, that is correct, Mike, of which. Nine hundred and ninety nine thousand three hundred and eighty should be raised by property taxes.
And that will come on the next, the next motion with the other article. So we have a highway fund. Do I hear a motion to accept the highway fund at one million? Two hundred eighty three thousand five hundred and forty one dollars. Do I hear that motion?
Help me out again. We're not on option four?
Yes, it is part of, it's, it is, it is, that's part of option four, Dave.
Okay, then I'm reading the wrong thing. I have the big sheet which says one, two, three, three, not eight, three.
No, because you need to add the fifty in.
Yeah, you had, yeah. I, I, these, these are the numbers Brandon handed to me based on Nate's motion to add the fifty. So it's one million two hundred eighty three thousand five hundred forty one dollars. That, that's fifty thousand is a, is a wash, Dave. It's a reserve. It's a revenue in and revenue out.
So when you couple that, then do you also add in? The, the amount to be raised by taxes?
No, not with the, not with the acceptance of the budget. You're just accepting the, the, the budget total, one million two hundred eighty three thousand five hundred forty one dollars. It's just for the budget. The highway fund budget.
Can't we do it together?
No, no, we'll do that with the article, Dave, like we just did with the general fund. We're doing the same thing we just did with the general.
Oh, I thought we already approved option four for everybody.
No, I just need a motion.
Yeah, go ahead.
For the highway fund, one million two hundred eighty three thousand five hundred forty one. We have a motion. Do I hear a second? Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the bu, of the, uh, budget highway fund, one million two hundred eighty three thousand five hundred forty one dollars signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries its unanimous. The budgets have been set. Now, the article. Correct?
Not raised by taxes.
That's.
Seven different.
Um, it, the amount to be raised by taxes will be in the article. It's approved by the voters.
Oh, that's us. We get approved for the warning.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. We're going to, we're going to do the warnings. And the amounts are going to be in there, both of them.
Well, we just did the general fund five minutes ago.
Yeah.
So don't we do the highway fund now?
We just did the general fund and the highway fund totals, Dave. Okay, now we need to do the articles. Let me read it to you. Shall the voters of the town of Weathersfield approve the expenditure of? One million eight hundred ninety thousand five hundred twenty seven dollars for the support of the operation of the town's general fund. One million five hundred three four hundred and fifty eight dollars shall be, uh, uh, shall be raised by property taxation, allowing the select board to set the appropriate tax rate. Do I hear a motion to accept that article? And those numbers? Motion's been made. Do I hear a second?
Yes.
Motion's made and seconded to set the. The, the warning. Uh, for one million eight hundred ninety thousand five hundred twenty seven dollars with taxation, with the taxation rate to be one million. Five hundred three. Thousand. Four hundred fifty eight dollars.
Well, not the rate.
Yeah, I know. The, the, the amount, the amount to be.
About.
I, I, I knew you, I knew you couldn't get by that. The, the amount to be raised by taxes, one million five hundred three four fifty eight. Yes. Okay? Do I hear, do I hear, we have the motion? Any further discussion?
To a hundred percent of those numbers.
Yes, yeah, Brandon, Brandon, Brandon did this. Not me.
He did it.
He gave them to me. Okay, uh, hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That sets the general fund warning article. Article seven for the highway fund. Shall the voters of the town of Weathersfield approve the expenditure of? One million two hundred eighty three thousand five hundred forty one dollars for the support and operation of the town's highway fund. Nine hundred ninety nine thousand three hundred eighty dollars shall be raised by property taxation, allowing the select board to set the appropriate tax rate. Do I hear that motion? Do I hear a second? I'll, Nate seconded it. Um, any discussion on that motion?
Yes.
So.
So now where we, on the option four, which is the big sheet that says that the, the number, the top number that you just gave you added fifty thousand, don't we? Uh, how does that work? When the same number says nine ninety nine, wouldn't you lower that?
No.
Amount to be raised because you already have it?
No, because you're, you're bringing a revenue in of fifty thousand dollars and you're sending a revenue out somewhere else for the exact same amount. It's a one in, one out. It's, it's a wash. It doesn't show in the ta, in the, in the amount of money to be raised by taxes. Because it's revenue that's coming in from a reserve account and then you're moving it to. Or it's, 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 it's money that's exist in a fund balance and you're moving it into a reserve account.
Oh, you're not going to use to be reducing the tax rate?
No.
Well, we're using fifty two thousand.
Thought we went through this already. We already, we've already had those questions.
But, but.
Getting, this is wearing thin.
Um, just to, just to answer the question. We're using fifty two thousand five hundred. To reduce the property tax need. But. We're adding fifty thousand more in fund balance. To that use of fund balance and then we're transferring fifty thousand out to prevent a special article. Which would increase the taxes. So it's. In essence, it is a hundred and two thousand five hundred and. Property tax relief. Because otherwise we would. Put those on the. Warning and they'd be taxed.
Yeah, you'd be raising taxes, but you're not. It's a revenue in and revenue out. It's, it's a wash.
We're using money.
Which is why you don't see it on the. Tax need side. Okay, Dave, you outside with that?
No, I can't follow, so I. Not gonna say anymore.
Uh, we have a motion um to set the uh. Highway, the, for, for the um article, for the highway fund, one million, two hundred eighty-three thousand, five hundred forty-one dollars, of which uh nine. Hundred ninety-nine thousand, three hundred eighty thousand shall be raised by property taxation, allowing the select board to set the appropriate tax rate. Any further discussion on that motion?
I just want to make sure Dave fully understands the motion. Um, it's, it is a little bit. So Dave, can you restate your question one more time?
Dave?
Yep. I thought by adding the fifty thousand that you would reduce. The nine ninety-nine, which is all about where, you know, you don't really care about the top number. You care about the amount to be raised by taxes. And I thought by adding. The surplus, the fund balance, I did not know that we were going to take that and split it into two reserve accounts.
I see. Well, well, no, we're using fifty-two thousand, five hundred already. For property tax relief. And then what they did under the last option four was add fifty thousand to the use of fund balance and then transfer it to reserve accounts.
So my only remaining question will be, what was the amount to be raised by taxes? And I'm not gonna look at my papers again last year.
Nine hundred and eighty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety. So this represents a one percent change or eleven thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars.
I'm a yes. I'm ready for the vote.
Okay. All, that, that ends the discussion. Any further, uh, any further discussion? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. That sets the article for the highway fund. And we did the solid waste at the beginning of the meeting. That's already done. So those three budgets are done. Now we just have the rest of the. Um, town meeting warning. Do you want to go through these one by one or do you want to, is everybody up to speed on these? Articles one, two, three, and four are pretty standard. Um, they're there every year. Correct, Brandon?
Yeah.
One through four are pretty much the standard business that we go through every year. Um. Uh, art, article five, the only change to article five, uh-oh. I didn't know if you got your phone wet. Article five, uh, the only change to that article will be the addition of the names, which we won't have. But yeah, but that's okay. They just add, we just add the names. Um.
We usually add the names on the warning? I don't think we do, Mike.
Oh, no, that's right. All right, that's right. You don't. No, um.
No, cause I think there's parentheses underneath that says by Australian ballot.
Well, if you have two people running for school director under three years, there's gonna be two names added there, correct? Wouldn't there? Wouldn't there be? Or is it just director one? If you have two people, if some, doesn't somebody take out paperwork to be a school director?
They do.
School board? So you're gonna add their name, so their name will be on the ballot, not on the warning.
Right.
Got it. Ah, okay. Sorry, I'm tired. Um. So six and seven are done. Eight. Is done, solid waste. Um, senior solutions. Brandon, you want to address that?
Yeah, they increased their request from two thousand to two thousand, five hundred. Um, so this is the council on aging for southeastern Vermont. So because they're increasing it beyond what it was before. By policy, anything over five hundred dollars goes to the voters um for five oh one C three appropriations. So because of that, it's a special article. There's a spelling mistake in there, just.
Uh, where's that? Um. Senior, it needs to be corrected.
Yeah.
Typo. Article nine.
Yep.
Okay, so we have articles one, two, three, four, five.
Wouldn't it be appropriate that the fire department article is before article nine?
It would.
I, yeah, I want it as part of.
On that one.
When we're looking at town business, I want it with town business. Uh, uh, which, you know, it's also important then we get the numbering, right? So that one would be article ten.
Fire department would be nine. Fire department article. Now, do you want to create that article now? Create the language for that now?
Yeah, is there a schedule yet for Doolittle's?
Um, yeah, we're currently working on the annual town report. Um, and I believe it needs to be. At Doolittle's. I would say usually it's um. It gets, so the town report goes into the hands of the voters thirty days in advance of town meeting. So that puts us at.
Probably big, baby, first week of February.
Yes, first week of February. So Doolittle's needs time to print it. I would say. We should have everything to Doolittle's earlier than the twenty-third. But I can verify that. The question is how to word that special article, right? Yeah, that. Yep.
When's the next meeting? Got to twenty-seven?
Yep.
So after I get to the eighty thousand dollars, what do you want to hear? Shall the voters of the town of Weathersfield approve the expenditure of eighty thousand dollars? For the support?
Of, uh, for fire department stipends.
For the support of. Um, fire. Department stipends. Um.
And you'd have to put in parentheses, not in budget.
Not in budget. Um, is that all you want in there or is there anything else?
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to think through, having never written ballot language before. Um. Right, would be the purpose of supporting a pavement insensible fire department. Alright, that's what I'm trying to think.
Ray? Yes, yes, correct. That, that's why I, I, I'm just shout the voters of the town of Weathersfield approve the expenditure of eighty thousand dollars for the support of fire department stipends, not in budget.
Do you guys want, or do you guys want to say something else?
Word.
For the use of fire department.
To be used for. I like, I like that, to be used for. And I, I mean, typically run these best, the dead attorney, just to make sure that, yes.
Or, well, if you're gonna do that, we shouldn't probably vote on it tonight, then.
I agree.
That.
The only advice I'm gonna offer is this. Um, I listened to the whole debate, you know, like an hour ago and. Um, normally, the only time that I've ever seen this happen before was when the other fire, when the chief came up for a vote. Because typically it's for a piece of machinery or something, or some money that's being set aside. This one would be used where you'd wanna make this vote, I guess, binding, so it becomes an annual expense. I don't want to vote about it in twenty-seven and twenty-eight.
It's correct.
So. You have to word it where it becomes.
Actually, 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 they, I think they fixed it. That's a good point, Dave. Um, so when it went to to be used annually.
Year after.
Uh.
Well, and I, and I think that's why you need to ask attorneys on crafting it because, right, what we're trying to do is transition to a pavement. Right? And this, this is the, the, basically the money that would be the start of. For that, that would build over time, right? Cause you're gonna be, that, it will become a department.
Okay.
And it's a truly administrable department, right? And that's, that's why I think it's.
So we, we, we could still vote on it without the actual language. We know, we kind of know the basis of it and, and what the, and we know our intent. So we can still vote on a, an article for this purpose. And the town manager can have that drafted by a, an attorney to, to make sure it's. Proper legally used.
And then. You guys can come in and sign or.
Exactly.
Special meeting.
That, exactly. We just come in and sign that way. If, if you vote on it tonight, you, you don't have to have another meeting. You can come in and just sign it. But once we, once we have the language.
Um, I am, so what we haven't done is discuss the actual amount, right? Uh.
Right, I wrote this for eighty.
Right.
That was actually.
Kind of curious where the board is.
That wasn't part of option four because option four was just to put it out special article.
Correct. And that's, so I was sort of curious where the board is sitting on that.
I'm eighty. Nate? Yes, you're, you're, you're next.
Uh, I think I meant sixty as a, I mean, what I want it to do is. Pass, and I think that that is the highest. I don't want that to be the reason. I don't want the dollars to be the reason.
I think it's up to us to, to present the article.
I agree.
And, and if you present the article and you're presenting it with support, I, I think it'll pass. That's my opinion. That's, but that's just my opinion. I'd hate to be wrong, but I think that's my opinion. I know that's my opinion. Rika?
I have.
No, that, that's not the question. Question is how much? Sixty, eighty? He's at sixty, I'm at eighty. Kelly?
Yeah, Brady?
Dave?
I don't know. I thought I made myself pretty clear before about the model and so forth, where I tried to. I tried to put myself in both positions. I'll tell you the strongest way you vote through, you just don't want, and, but we already, there, there's a ship has sailed. Um. The strongest model ever, we've, we've gone through this with the library, um.
Dave, um, Dave, I'm gonna interrupt you. It is getting late and we're not in the model discussion now. We're asking a simple question. How much? What do you support?
I'm not answering the question.
Okay. Um, so you have four, uh, 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 three, you're, you're eighty or sixty? Where are you, where are you at? You, you staying at sixty?
Uh, I can.
I got three at eighty.
I understand that. I heard that loud and clear. Right.
So.
And, right, so we're only voting on the dollar amount. The model, you guys are gonna continue to refine and come back based, yeah.
Yeah, um, I.
That, that's why, Dave, that was my thing is they're coming back to us with, with the model before this thing.
So you want another meeting?
I don't think we need the, the model before we vote on the budget that they're gonna build off of. I don't, so I mean, I. They have time to be able to develop how they're gonna use.
No, I mean, the, 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 the article to, to go in the, the warning. We're, we're, we're gonna, that's gonna be crafted by an attorney. I, I, I don't really want to come back for a special meeting, but I will. If we vote, if we, if we just.
Suggesting, no.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so we're at eighty thousand dollars. Um, and, and that will be an article added as number eight, correct? Or number nine? Seven, eight will be number nine. And number ten will then be the uh council on aging. Okay? Um, so. Articles six, seven, and eight are already done, uh. As they are shown in the packet, articles six, seven, and eight are complete. Those are the budget. Um, articles.
Is there a reason the, is there any reason why you wouldn't put fire department? Actually as article six, so that it's separated from those special appropriations, even though there's only one? Like, well, I don't, I don't know if there's a legalese that determines the order in which articles have to be.
Generally, the.
But there's some logic in my head around. The intent of having this, right, these, any discussion which would not be to tag it on to the special appropriations. Uh, which, so I wonder about.
The general order of things, the way have they have been done in the past. The first three articles that. That you generally vote on are the operating budgets.
Well, I understand what's done in the past, right?
Now, that's the order. It's the operating budgets or, and, and the, and the solid waste is one of the operating budgets.
Does it need to be? That's what I'm asking, is could you put the fire department as article six, slide those down, then it's not sitting with the special? I don't see a problem with that personally.
I, 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 I see a problem with what, moving it up or leaving it where it is?
I mean, it just would change the conversation at town meeting, to be honest, that it, that it's up front conversation, not as a.
If, 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 if you're gonna do that, I'd put it right after the uh general fund, then article seven.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That, that makes sense to me. I'm, I'm okay with that, if you want to make that article seven.
That would make sense.
Okay. Where I'm trying to get us to is, is getting a vote on these articles so that we can close out and go home.
Article seven for the fire departments?
Article seven for the fire departments. Eight will be the highway department. Nine will then be the solid waste and ten will then be the um council on aging.
Yeah.
Correct? All right. Is everybody okay with the order and the actual articles? We are not signing this tonight because we're gonna wait for the. Um, article on the fire departments to be crafted uh, uh, by the town manager and attorney. And when that is uh verified through them, uh, he'll let us know and we just come in and sign it. Uh, but we can vote on it. We can vote on that tonight and then uh. We just, we're trusting that the attorney knows what he's doing and writing an article for us. We, we've selected the amount, so.
I think we're, I think we're fine, Mike.
Okay, so. So a motion to accept the articles um in the order just prescribed. With a dollar amount of eighty thousand dollars for the um article seven, to be entered in article seven. Do I hear that motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to uh prove the articles as written with article seven to include eighty thousand dollars. As the stipend amount in that article. Any further discussion on the articles? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, any opposed? Any abstentions? Um, did I hear five votes? Dave, did you vote? Mr. Fuller? Okay, I'll take that as an abstention. Uh, so it is four to one, the articles are approved. Okay. Upper Falls. Bridge storm damage repair. What do we got there, Brandon?
Hey, Ray, do you need action tonight on this?
Um, no, the sooner the better. I, I'm assuming.
Is it okay on the twenty-seventh?
Seventh?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, motion to move the item. item eight, award Upper Falls Bridge bid storm damage repair to the twenty-seventh? Are you a motion? Are you a second? I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And any abstentions? Uh, town manager update? You need to do an update tonight?
Uh, no, thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you all very much. Good night. Uh, future agenda items and, um, appointments? Uh, I don't see any appointments. Motion to approve the warrants. Do I hear a motion to approve the warrants? Uh, whoever made the motion, please read the warrants.
General fund payroll, thirty-seven thousand, two hundred seventeen dollars and fifty-seven cents. Operating expenses, thirty thousand, six hundred and forty dollars and six cents. Highway fund payroll, thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-nine cents. Operating expenses, twenty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents. Solid waste payroll, four thousand, five hundred and seventy-three dollars and forty-five cents. Operating expenses, one thousand, three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty-five cents. Library payroll, five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Grants four hundred and sixty-six dollars and twenty-seven cents. ARPA, thirty thousand, two hundred and fifteen dollars. Veterans Memorial Committee two hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-one cents. Uh, payroll taxes, twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and forty-two cents. For a total of fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars and twenty cents. Grand total payroll, eighty-one thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty-one cents. Operating expenses, one hundred and nineteen thousand, two dollars and fifty-seven cents.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on those warrants?
I've got one quick question.
Yeah.
On page seventeen of forty-nine, what is CCI Managed Services?
Uh, that's our IT services for the town.
I know it was something I just.
Okay, any other, any other discussion on the warrants?
Can I ask a question? Do, is, there's a legal reason that we need to read them in versus just read according to the warrant. That word?
Um.
I enjoy listening to Kelly and I think she has like a
She, you have a career in audiobooks. I just wonder, I just wonder
Dave, can you, can you answer that?
Or if that's something we actually need to do.
Dave?
I don't know.
Is there, is there a law on that, that it has to be read in or something?
I sent you a letter at the beginning of the meeting, Mike. And you just flipped my switch and I'm just checking out.
I, I see that. Um, we have a motion to approve the warrants. Uh, all those in favor approving the warrant signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed?
Yes, no.
And any abstentions? It is four to one, the motion carries. Uh, executive session.
I don't, I think.
Some other day? Okay. Any other business? And a motion, motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.